Excited that so many more people can join us in, in public meetings like this. This is, uh, this is more than double the, the size of what we can fit in here. So thanks again for being here. We'll get right to our, our items. Item C will first be the employees of the second quarter. And we'll go first with Mr. Dale Robinson to introduce our first employee of the quarter. We have a few of them.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's an honor to, to present this employee of the quarter. This is kind of a neat place, huh? This is awesome. Bronco, you want to come up? I pulled him right off of the sandbagger row. He is a sandbagger, Mayor, not in the sense that you know. But he, he has been a sandbagger for the last four or five days. Well, hi Bronx, how are you, brother? Good to see ya. So Bronco has been nominated as an employee of the quarter. And it's interesting because the one, the one, the only, the nomination read, "Bronco works harder than anybody else in the city." Period.
That was the end of it?
It's all set. It's all set.
And you believed it?
Well, apparently somebody else believed it too.
I believe it.
Bronco wrote it, he submitted it. But it was believable enough that, uh, that everybody, that colleagues voted for him. Honestly though, those of you that know Bronco know he's, he's deserving of this award. Bronco has been with the city almost fifteen years now. He started with our department as a, a program coordinator. And, uh, and Bronco has been in my office a lot. Now, not for bad things. But he, he's one that's constantly wanting to learn and ask questions. And, you know, give me more, teach me more, I want to do more. Now, when he was hired, Karen Bradford and I had kind of a power struggle over this. She wanted, he wanted, she wanted to hire somebody else. Bronco's hair was longer than hers at the time, and I think that was a problem for her. Is that right? Yeah. And I didn't know this at the time, so he kinda, he didn't tell me he was from Payson in the interview. Or that would have been a strike against him, right? Sorry for any of you that might be from Payson. Us old timers have a real rivalry with Payson, as you know. But, uh, we hired Bronco and it's been wonderful for us to have him on our staff. I found out he graduated from Utah State, so that was, I was immediately gonna hire him anyway. He has, he has worked through the ranks and two years ago became the assistant director in our department. He's over multiple divisions. The thing about Bronco is he has such a wonderful personality and has great people skills. People love him, but he's a hustler and a worker. And I've never had Bronco tell me, turn me down on, on any, uh, any responsibility. He's always willing to take on more, uh, which is sometimes not good. Because oftentimes we take advantage of people like Bronco and we keep dumping more things on him. But he has a great attitude and a great worth, work ethic. And as many of you know, our, our department, uh, we don't have standard work hours. We have, we work a lot of late hours and deal with a, and a variety of things. And so, uh, I, I want to, I appreciate his wife, Jody. And I know Bronx and the girls are all here, right? Yeah, look at them. You guys want to come up? No, I better not do that. I know a couple of these girls, if I turn the mic over to them, it would be quite entertaining, actually, because they're very talented. But as has already been said, uh, we can't do our jobs without family like these that are supportive. These guys work long, weird hours. And, uh, you know, Bronco's been down at the, the pit now for four or five straight days, as well as our other employees, and they're just outstanding. But this is, this is a young man who's, who's a star in our profession. He's already served as president of our state association and has wonderful colleagues all over, and he's recognized all over this state as a tremendous parks and recreation professional. So it's absolutely my honor to present Bronco Hunter with an employee of the quarter. Does he have to give a speech?
He can talk if he'd like.
Well, put a time limit on him.
Okay, alright, we'll cut to you.
Cut to you, Bronco.
No. I thought you knew me better, Mike, you shouldn't have given me the platform here. First thing is, you gotta quit inviting me here because my kids think they get treats every time they come here.
They do.
To this building. So they broke it in really nice. This is an honor. I honestly love my wife, I appreciate her and the patience that she has. And all of you have to say the same thing because we all work crazy, busy hours and it's, it's, uh, it's an all hands on deck always. Big thing is, though, I love my work family and they, they all make me look good. I think most of our teams, a bunch of my teams here, and I love them. And, um, I know that, you know, we go to these HR meetings and they're always like, "Make sure you keep that work relationship." It's pretty hard to work with them, good people and their family. You know, when Dale had his accident a couple of weeks ago, that, that hit pretty hard. I've been riding his coattails for fifteen years and I want to ride him for another fifteen. And, uh, you know, he says I always go in his office, but he, he has pushed me and helped me become really what Spanish Fork needs our department to, to be in employees. And I hope that I can follow his influence and do the same thing for all the employees that come in and work for our city. Because, um, and I can sit here all night and talk about every single one of you. I watched the old city council members come out and I could reminisce on some wonderful experiences that we've all shared together and that we're gonna share together. And, um, just a couple came to mind again, like Seth and Dale. Several years ago, I was at a crossroads in my career and they, um, they pushed me to go back to school. In fact, I didn't think I'd ever get in and, and I asked them later on why they let me in, they're like, "Well, it's because we like Seth's parents," so I'll take that. But I'm blessed to work with just wonderful people, you make me look good, and I appreciate y'all, love y'all, so thank you.
Thank you, Bronco.
Thank you.
Pete's gonna do a picture.
Are we down?
We're down.
Yep.
So council, council, we got a little bit of form. Is that Bronco up in the middle there?
Bronco.
I think that was.
You have the girl?
Yeah.
Hey, Jody, can you get this picture, please?
Only if they have the same.
Allie, Bron.
Thank you very much. I'll be here all week.
Congrats, Bronco. The digged can.
Hey, you're back. Here, score down here. This, oh, you want this, this is the best.
Yeah, sorry about that. Next play.
Did he reach the red? Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Alright, we have another employee of the quarter. And, uh, Mr. Jake Tyre is here to introduce him.
Thank you, Mayor, like Dale. I have the privilege to introduce another great city employee. Seems to be a theme here. But, uh, this one's probably well past due and should have been done a long time ago. Guy Chain, why don't you come up? Well, say a few things about Guy. He is, his, his title is meter technician. And so he is responsible for everything electric meter throughout town. That is the, so if your bills are wrong, it's Guy's fault, right? So, because the meter's not working. But he does a great job. He does all the installs, all the testing, all the inspections, he does everything. And he's worked here about nineteen and a half years. And he start, implemented the first AMI system for Spanish Fork, which in short terms got rid of the meter reader going to every house, right? So now it's by two-way radio, we can collect all that information real fast. And he was very instrumental in doing that. And in fact, last year with supply chain issues and stuff, we had a hard time getting meters. So we were really scared with all this development we had coming in. We were worried we weren't gonna have any meters for development. And Guy came up with a solution last year to implement a new AMI system to go along with our one we have now at a real reduced price. And also, we're gonna be saving money on the meters. So he, he's just a huge asset to me personally and other departments. I know other departments really rely on him for his knowledge, you know? Dale was saying Bronco's always coming in and asking him questions. I'm always going to Guy. He's so smart, he knows a lot about everything. And so he is really an asset to me and to the city. And so, uh, he's well deserving of this and we want to thank Guy for everything he does because we're glad to have him for as long as we can have him, so. Guy Chain?
Mayor, Council, I guess the, all these guys, I know them too. Grateful for the opportunity to work here. It was an interesting situation that brought me here. I was actually out of work for thirteen months and I was, uh, working as a superintendent for Salisbury Homes, building houses. And I got a call one day that said, "I'm taking a medical retirement. If you want to come work for Spanish Fork City, get ahold of Jeff." And so I did, and this is where I'm at. Thank you for the opportunity to serve here.
Thank you, Guy. Appreciate you. Thanks, Guy. Good job, well, thank you. Let's get a picture right here. We're taking a picture. Please, I want these up. Take pictures. Use your phone. My camera's almost as expensive as his. It's actually pretty close, yeah? Can we move the phone in for Seth? No. Okay, Tyler has our next employee of the quarter.
So a couple of years ago, we had a young man that was in the BYU MPA program start to work for us as the management intern in the city manager's office. And, uh, that young man was Nate Reed. Since that time, Nate has become the assistant to the city manager and just recently got off probation. One of the first things that Nate did when he got off probation is in our director's meeting, uh, he led a discussion. You guys have been part of a presentation that Nate gave. Nate is really good at engaging people and helping them to, to really think about what they're doing. So he asked the directors a few questions, had a piece of paper he gave to each of us, asked us to fill it out and then to discuss with, with your neighbor. We got done and, uh, and, and Chris, where'd he go? Is Chris Thompson not in here? Oh, he went to the river, okay. It's a good place to be. So those of you that know Chris Thompson, our public works director, he is very analytical and analyzes everything. And it's a great thing for the city because we're, we're better because of it. But he asked Nate a question about, about this questionnaire. And Nate, being fresh off probation, says, "Chris, sometimes you overanalyze things." And that's a pretty bold statement by a guy that just, just got off probation and has only been.
Just off probation?
Yeah.
He's not saying that before.
That's a good point. He's, that's another thing about Nate is he's really, really intelligent. We're so grateful to have Nate. Nate is in charge of, uh, he, he does the risk management for the city and is, is very instrumental in some of the projects that we've been, uh, doing. We talked about the river and some of the, uh, challenges we're facing there. Nate, uh, has helped to get cameras up on the river so that we can, we can monitor the flows and, um, just always so willing to do whatever it is that he's asked to do with a smile and just a great personality. And just very grateful to have Nate. Grateful to have Nate's wife here, Kiri, and then their little guy named Grant that woke up to see his dad get employee of the quarter. So Nate, do you wanna, you wanna come on?
Thanks, Tyler. I've always wanted to be one of those dads who comes up with the kid. I don't want to say a whole lot except for that I know how hard, um, our employees have worked this quarter with the river work and the budget and all the other things that we have going on. And so I really do feel honored to, to get this. And, um, I'm just thankful to work here and with so many amazing people. Thankful for my, uh, my family, my wife and Grant. And with that, yeah, thanks everyone.
Thank you, Nate.
Thank you.
Yeah. She likes Reese's. Grant's dad likes Reese's. There we go.
Stay for a photo, please. Here we go.
What a difference a week makes.
Mayor, can you move to one side or the other?
Yes.
I know you want to be in the picture.
Sorry.
Here we go. Thank you.
Job, D.
Thanks, Dave, congratulations.
Very, very good. Thank you, all employees of the quarter. We appreciate, we appreciate all the good work you do. Spanish Fork is not what it is without the good work you do. So thank you, employees of the second quarter. Okay, that takes item number four on our agenda, public comments. This is any time for the public to come speak to the mayor and council. Please, if you're here from the public and would like to speak, come up, let Tara know your name and, uh, speak. Yes?
Caleb Pollak. Good evening, Mayor and Council. These past few days have been a great moment in the history of this community. They've also been a little tragic and a little stressful, as we all know. But I want to focus on the good tonight. I've prepared some remarks, so if I'm not looking at you, I don't take offense, but I just want to get this right. From caring service for our neighbors through sandbagging to turning the page with this library hall, great things are happening. According to Oxford, history can be defined as the continuous record of important public events. Public events and the recording of those happenings cannot exist without people. This community today has some roughly forty-six thousand people in it that call this place home. If every citizen of our city were to stand shoulder to shoulder in a line starting here on Main Street and continuing onto I-15, that line would be twenty-six point one-three miles, long enough to get to American Fork. If you were to spend five seconds, just five, with every person in that line, it would take sixty-three point eight hours to meet everyone. We have a lot of people in this community today, great people. Many of them were here in this chamber today. But there are a lot more great people that have lived in this place that are not here today. For many of us, our ancestors who built this city, their stories are in this book. This is Spanish Fork's history book. It lives in the library, just out that glass around the corner, on a shelf in the special collections. This book is unlike any other. It tells the epic tales of natives, friars, pioneers, immigrants, immigrants, soldiers, fathers, mothers and children. Families, musicians, artists, teachers, scholars, leaders, farmers, defenders, servants, schools, clubs, groups and teams, all living life and doing their best just to make ends met. Through famines, wars, droughts, floods and good times, they live their lives just as we do today. We learn from the past, as Churchill put it, because if we don't, we are doomed to repeat it. The last update to Spanish Fork's history book was made in two thousand and five when the book was published. Today, it is some eighteen years old, out of date. In the decades to come, where will our descendants look for the knowledge of their past? Where will they go to see what happened when the community came together to stave off the potential flood of twenty-three? Or when that rec center down on Main Street by the sports park opened? Or when that all abilities park was built? Or when that wastewater treatment plant was finished? The transfer station, the new high school, that state football championship title yet to happen? And on and on and on with the great things that are happening and will happen everywhere constantly in this city. I can't think of a better time or way to recommit ourselves to our past and to our future than by continuing the tradition of recording the feelings of pride and progress we feel in our city in this, our history book. I tell you these things because I believe all of us in this room share a common bond. And that is that we love and want what is best for our community. Spanish Fork, this is truly right where we all belong.
Thank you, Caleb. Appreciate that. Thank you. Anyone else?
Um, well, I wasn't at all planning on speaking tonight, but, um...
Give your name to Tara.
Emily Peterson.
Thank you.
Considering tonight we're celebrating the opening of our first night as the city council meeting in this new building, um, and then I walk in to see this new flag that was put upon us. And it doesn't even go into effect until next year. And especially on celebratory, um, commemorative, um, events is when the historic state flag should be especially used. So the governors, the governor sent, put out this, uh, executive order saying, "Whereas the historical state flag was created by the daughters of the American Revolution in nineteen oh three under the direction of the Governor Hebert M. Wells. Whereas the historic state flag, the flag we've all known and come to love, included a blue background, an American eagle, the word industry and a beehive. Whereas the historic state flag displayed the year eighteen forty-seven to commemorate the year Utah was settled and the year eighteen ninety-six to commemorate the year Utah achieved Whereas the Utah State Legislature adopted the historic state flag on May ninth, nineteen eleven. Whereas despite minor changes over the last century, these original features remain as powerful symbols of the historic state flag. As the historic state flag is a symbol of faith, diligence and strength of the people of Utah..." That, that one's not. "...as historic state flag and its rich background continue to inspire the people of Utah. Now therefore I sponsor Jay Cox, Governor of the State of Utah by authority vested in me by the Constitution and laws of this state hereby order and petition as follows..." I'll skip some of this. "...a department, division, office, bureau or other organization within the state executive branch, including the state tax, tax commission, the National Guard, the Board of Pardon, parole and other important organizations..." And I'm not gonna bother continuing, um, "The historic state flag means the Utah state flag, again, that we've all come to know and love. The state flag means that." Many of us don't have any kind of a connection to that. And there's gonna be a, an initiative for that, so that would be wonderful. "So requirements for preserving the significance of the historical state flag. All steps necessary should be taken, including a convening of the state Capitol Preservation Board, yada, yada, things that will happen to the state. Agencies shall fly this historic flag on state property on each legal holiday, um, on separate flag poles." And he goes on to say, "So that when displaying the historic state flag on public grounds in any location where the state flag is also displayed, the governmental entity responsible for the display of the flag shall ensure that the historic state flag is displayed above the state flag." And I don't even see our historic state flag or it's still our state flag until next year. Anyways, I just want to add on to what Eldora Pollak was saying. It's important to preserve our history. And so, I'm just explaining that I don't see our state flag here tonight, so thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Well, that'll take us to number five, council comments. And, uh, we're sitting in new seats, so it's gonna take me a minute to get this, but we're gonna have Council, Councilwoman Beck go first tonight in council comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start off by inviting the new twenty-twenty-three Miss Spanish Fork of Lexi Hill and her royalty. Come on up, ladies. And I've asked Lexi if she'll introduce herself and all of you lovely ladies, she can introduce you or you can introduce yourselves, whatever you guys want to do.
Thank you so much. I'm so excited to be here. My name is Alexis, everyone calls me Alexis, so that's great. My parents are Chad and Jamie Hill. You might know Chad, he worked at the city for a long time. I've been to Spanish Fork for three days now and they have been so incredible. If I leave a trail of sand, I'm really sorry because that's where I was right before this. And these are my four amazing attendants and I'll let them introduce themselves.
My name is Emma Williams. So nice to meet you all, I can't wait for this year.
I'm Kayden Sealan, I'm excited to serve with you guys again.
I'm Annette Phillips, I'm also excited to start working with you guys and being around you and meeting you guys again.
I'm Madeline Smith, and like they all said, I'm also very excited. It's gonna be a great year.
Yes. They're all so amazing and my community service initiative really focuses on service and getting as many people involved, so I am so excited to get started with all of you guys and get as involved as I can.
Thank you, Lexi. I love that you guys just came from sandbagging, correct?
Yes.
You ran over to Jen Olson's house and changed your clothes and...
In the old city building, actually.
Oh, over in the old city, okay.
You're reminiscing.
Wow, you guys clean up good and fast. Well, congratulations, we are so excited to have you represent our beautiful city and look forward to seeing you, especially during yesterday's. I know that's, uh, will be your busiest two weeks of your year.
Yes.
But congratulations, you guys work hard, so.
Thank you so much, you guys are amazing.
Thank you, you guys can go ahead and sit down unless you have anything.
No, just give them a round of applause.
Okay, and the next thing is library hall. All of our viewers will recognize, we are now in our new council chambers, which is located in library hall. And we have asked our library director, Scott Alet, to come up. and tell us a little bit about what has happened in the last four days. Some big events, lots of exciting things. This picture that I have up right now, I think is one of my favorite pictures of Saturday when we opened our doors, because you can see how many people were there outside. It felt like there were a lot, but it took about twenty minutes for everyone to literally get inside the doors. Hundreds and hundreds of people, Scott, right?
Yep.
Tell us all about it. What kind of numbers can you share with us?
Yeah, so this picture reminds me of waking up early, getting to Disneyland when they open the gates, right? It was crazy. It was just so exciting to see as we were, you know, doing the ribbon cutting, seeing that group grow and grow and grow and grow to the point where we opened the doors and just the flood of individuals coming in to enjoy this wonderful space that we are all in tonight. So it's been a lot of fun. Saturday was crazy, uh, super busy for our staff. It was our best circulation day on record. So our highest day of circulation before Saturday, we had checked out about thirty-two hundred books in one day. And that day was the day after Memorial Day a couple of years ago, which is always our busiest day of the year. First day of summer, parents are thinking, my kids are gonna read all summer long, I'm gonna keep them engaged. Gotta get them out of the house, let's take them to the library. So day after Memorial Day every year is the busiest day. And that day for us is typically a ten AM to an eight PM day. And on Saturday, we circulated thirty-five hundred items from ten to four. So four fewer hours than a typical workday for us. And it was just double checking our door count numbers. We estimate that we had about fifty-five hundred people come through the doors on Saturday.
You're kidding.
It was busy from ten AM to four PM. Finally had to play closing time and usher people out of the building and say, we love that you're here, but it's time to go home. You can come back on Monday. But it was fun. The photos don't really do it justice. Just, you don't, you don't see the masses like we did on Saturday, right? You just get a, you know, a snapshot of what it looked like, but it was such an exciting day. And then we finished Saturday, and we think, okay, what's Monday gonna be like? And yesterday was, was just as busy as a typical summer day for us. So yesterday, we circulated about twenty-six hundred items. And that's what we do on a typical day during the summer, when people are out of school, looking for things to do. On a typical day, we'll circulate, you know, any other time of the year, we'll circulate just over a thousand items a day. Really good day would be about fifteen hundred items. So to do twenty-six hundred items yesterday is just great. We've had hundreds of new library accounts set up, a lot of patrons coming back to use the library after maybe a while that they haven't used it. And a lot of new people come in to create new library accounts that maybe hadn't used the library before. So it has been a lot of fun walking around and engaging with patrons and asking them what they like, what they don't like. And I tell them, you won't hurt my feelings, but I just want, you know, sincerity and, and I want to know what you guys think. Uh, all of that aside, I think the biggest takeaway for me the last couple of days, as I've walked around and talked with people, has been talking with the teenagers. So in our old building, on a good day, we would probably have maybe six teens hanging out in the library. And they would go upstairs where all the adults are, and the adults would get a little bugged because there's a rowdy group of teenagers. So then the teens would go downstairs, and the kids would get bugged because there's a rowdy group of teenagers, and they just didn't have anywhere to be. So this building, we were very mindful in having a space for the teenagers to come and hang out after school. We're what, two blocks away from the high school? So yesterday, we had forty-five teenagers hanging out in our teen space, when in the past, we'd maybe have six. The balconies were full with teenagers doing homework, the study rooms were full with teenagers doing homework. We had a bunch doing VR or playing video games or drawing on our whiteboards or playing Nerf guns. And I loved walking through and just asking this group, what do you think? And most of them, I had never seen their faces before. I saw a handful that are, were kind of our regulars at the old building. Most of them I'd never seen before. And I asked, what do you guys think? We love that there's a place for us to go after school and hang out. Asked a group that was studying out on the balcony, and they said, we got all of our homework done in an hour. This is great. We're coming back every day. I'm like, do it. We'd love for you to come back. This space is for you. We want it to be a safe place. I don't care if you're playing video games or doing Nerf or doing your homework, we want this to be a safe place for you. And it's the same thing this afternoon, just dozens and dozens of teens hanging out here in what is a nice, safe place. And that's what we want. A place to gather the community together, in a safe place where we can grow and build those relationships with one another. So we're only two days in, and we are loving it. And May typically is kind of a slow month for us, end of the school year, right? And we are doing so well. I just can't wait to see what the rest of this month holds. And then once summer hits, when our busy season comes around, just what it's gonna look like and what, what we can anticipate there, so. Excited to be here, excited that you all now can enjoy this space for your meetings. But happy to answer any questions or anything like that, if you guys have anything relative to Library Hall.
Anything for Scott? He'll be back in a couple of weeks to give us an update too, right?
Yep, talking about summer reading program, it's starting here in a couple of weeks, so.
Scott, I, I do wanna say, having been here on Saturday during the ribbon cutting, great job to you and your staff being prepared to handle that many people. The programs that were going on, the science thing going on next door, people were excited to be here. And you guys, your group did a fantastic job, so thank you. Thank you for your prep.
And like Councilman Euler said, it's my staff, right? They just stepped up to the plate. It was exciting coming in, being outside, taking photos, and I came into the back, seeing all of my staff there, and their awesome red, not blue shirts. And two of them took the reins, and they were coordinating and giving assignments and whatnot. And it was just awesome to see their excitement, and they did a phenomenal job, like you had mentioned. And we've got really great employees here across all the city, right, all departments, but especially unbiased. I think we've got the best at the library, so. Thank you all. We're so excited to be in this new space.
Thank you, Scott. Yeah, Saturday will go down, I'm sure, in our memories as one of.
It was the best day ever.
It really was.
I mean, I, it was, I thought we were throwing a party for me because of my birthday.
Because it was your birthday.
And then we opened the library at the same time. I'm like, oh, that was nice of everyone.
Yeah, I was giddy. It was fun. It was so fun to see so many people, so thank you for your support. We are so excited to share this space with you. I loved hearing that, Scott, that the teens are coming. Forty-five people, forty-five kids feeling loved in a safe space, so I, I loved hearing that, so thank you. Uh, moving on, the day before the library on Friday, the twenty-eighth, was Arbor Day. Mayor Mendenhall had declared that Spanish Fork City's Arbor Day, and we are a tree city, so we planted seven or eight trees up at a park in Spanish Fork. We had kids help plant the trees and a small program with a couple classes from Canyon View Elementary. So we appreciate our Parks and Rec Department for getting that prepped and, and ready, and that was a fun program. Um, and then, geez, it seems like so much has happened these last two weeks. Since last council meeting, we all attended the Utah League of Cities and Towns Conference. And there were a lot of classes that we were able to go to. Our staff was there also attending, and it was just a really good experience. Chad, you took off, you missed the picture, but just for the record, Chad was there. Was?
Kevin set this aside, not smiling there, so.
Oh, yeah. So it, it was a really good conference, and we appreciate the time the staff puts into getting us all there and. What was that? Nothing, okay. And then there's also been several ribbon cuttings. We went to Amavi, where that is a new event center in Reams. Quick Quack up on Highway Six opened its second location in Spanish Fork, its forty-eighth location in Utah. And then my favorite ribbon cutting was Edward Jones. Mayor Mendenhall opened his doors officially with a ribbon cutting in his office on Main Street, so welcome to Main Street. I don't know that you want everyone to know that Mayor really has an office on Main Street, but.
I got a good secretary that protects me.
Okay, good. Yep. So thank you. Thank you to the staff. It's been a busy two weeks with a lot of things, especially with the flooding and water, so thank you everybody for your work on that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman Beck. We'll go down this way. Councilman Euler?
My turn.
Yep.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, it has been a busy couple of weeks. It's been exciting, been a lot of fun. Couple of things that weren't mentioned, besides the ribbon cuttings that took place, which were exciting. Same day that the library ribbon cutting took place was also the fiftieth anniversary of our gun club. So wanna recognize that, congratulate all those employees that work at the gun cl- gun club that have kept that going for fifty years. We've got literally one of the best gun col- gun clubs in the nation. People come from all over to be able to shoot at our, at our gun club, so congratulations to them. Wanna talk about briefly, spring cleanup is still going on. If you go to a dumpster and it's full, or a dumpster is not there, just a reminder to please not just leave your stuff on the ground or next to a dumpster for somebody else to take care of. It's a great opportunity. The city provides this service for all of us. And just a reminder, let's, let's be respectful and let's keep our community clean if we can.
Can I piggyback on that just for a sec?
Go ahead.
I appreciate you bringing that up. Nick, can you throw those up real quick? We drove by, I think it was the, the park up by the junior high. Stuff outside the dumpsters, um, clearly they're full, clearly they're full. They'll be empty in two hours from now. Come back and put your stuff in when they're empty. Don't expect someone to clean up your mess. Um, from my perspective, if we can't do better than this as a city, we are not going to do this again. This is, this is not free. This does cost the taxpayer dollars, and it costs the taxpayer dollars to clean up their mess. Give it two hours, drive two minutes to another one, go to the dump if you need to and you can't find one. You have it loaded up, be responsible. Um, we can do better than this on Spanish Fork City, or Spanish Fork Community, I should say. So I just wanted to piggyback on yours. I know you saw the same thing.
Oh, yeah.
It's just super frustrating to try to do something good for the city like this. And so many people took advantage of it and did the right thing, and just a few people decided not to do the right thing.
Yeah, thank you.
We can do better.
Yeah, thank you for adding to that. Uh, the community garden was, the event took place, ribbon cutting for our community garden here in the, here in the city. We've got some photos of that ribbon cutting, thanks to Pete, took those for us. But just north of the Spanish Fork Police Department, we've got a new community garden where residents who maybe don't have a piece of ground in their yard that they can grow things on have the opportunity to pay just a small amount to reserve a little plot that they can come and plant their own things. The city's providing the area, also providing the water to be able to grow things. Many businesses in Spanish Fork act- actually sponsored the materials that the garden has, so we're grateful to them. And what a cool thing, what a cool thing to have in our city, so we're excited to see how that does this year. So if you're looking for a place to grow some vegetables or some fruit, head on down to the community garden and look for their Facebook page. It'll give you all the details you need on signing up for Vox. And last but not least for me, obviously a huge thing going on right now is, is the flooding or the mitigation and preparing for possible flooding. So I wanna talk about the sandbags. There's a little video, we're gonna start with the video if we can. There's no audio, but a few, let's see, I think it was Friday afternoon. My neighborhood got the call that Saturday, we were all gonna go into action to meet at a certain location and start to organize. And I can't say enough about Spanish Fork and our community and the volunteer attitude that we have here in Spanish Fork. People showed up from the east end of town, coming down to the west end of town, going into people's backyards. The lieutenant governor was there, carrying sandbags, helping build these walls. And it was such an awesome view, just to see the spirit of service that, that exists in Spanish Fork. So many people, um, long, long days and sore muscles the next day, but guess what? They, they got up the next day, went down to the fairgrounds and did it all again. Started filling sandbags and preparing, and it's, it's been great. It's been fun to watch. If you wanna see what ten to fifteen thousand sandbags looks like, this is it. Um, the residents and Chris and Seth, I'll, I'll share this with you, but so many people involved in planning and preparing for this situation. Mayor, you as well. I've had many, many people reach out to me and say, we don't know who to talk to or who to tell thank yous to. They're very, very grateful down on my end of town. Very grateful for the preparation and the work the city's put into this, so I just wanted to express that to you, each of you. All of the city employees that I know spend a Friday afternoon filling sandbags, probably not doing what they wanted to, but helping, um, helping those of us in an area that needed it, so we're very, very grateful. Got a couple of pictures that I wanna show now and just talk a little bit more about. You'll notice that one bag there in the middle is a little bit different, right? What, what the story is with this one is there were two groups putting together a wall. One on the east end, one on the west end, and then they finally merged in the middle, and somebody said, you know what? We need a golden sandbag. And so they ran home, grabbed a can of gold spray paint, and sprayed the final sandbag gold. And I don't know, Mayor, if we can maybe get a city monument or something put in place to commemorate the day that we placed the golden sandbag, bringing the two walls together. But just a cool, cool atmosphere in our community. Uh, the next picture I think shows, shows those individuals that were laying the sandbags. There's one more, Nick, if we, so here they are putting down the golden sandbag. Look at all the smiles. That's another thing I wanted to indicate. If you looked on social media at some of these photos that have been posted about sandbagging, lots and lots of smiles. People were super excited and very happy to serve and be there. One, one more photo I wanna point out is this one. This took place today, so the next one. We had one more piece of the wall that we needed to do. Those four individuals in the middle, you'll notice there's a home being constructed in the background. They saw us working on the wall, putting down sandbags, and they stopped the work that they were doing on that home. Stopped, stopped the construction they were doing, and they came over and they helped us lay sandbags. And that's just the attitude that we have here in Spanish Fork. Somebody sees a place where, where help needs to be given, they step up and they do it. So super appreciative of everybody there. Uh, one final thing, Mayor, I wanted to share with you what my eight-year-old Nolan suggested we do with the amount of water in the river to help with the flooding. He told me today, why don't we in the city get a huge fire hose, vacuum out all of the water into a really, really big container? And then when the snow melts, we can put it back in the river. So I just wanted to pass that on maybe to some of the city staff, so.
Sounds like a future engineer.
That's all I had. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Euler. Councilman Carden?
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'll start where Kevin ended. The sandbagging effort has been so incredible to see the community coming together. Um, many people in this room have spent hours, I, I, as I look through the residents in the audience, um, city staff. Every time you go down there, there's certain people that I don't know if they're living at the fairgrounds or if there's like a cot set up, but, um, Dell Robinson specifically, I don't know if he has slept since Friday, but he's there all the time. And then to see, you know, Kevin's neighborhood come together, I think you, I think I heard five hundred people down there on Saturday, building these walls. We've had, last night at the fairgrounds, we had dozens and dozens, if not hundreds, of high school students there. Um, and Seth rallying a group to try to be the fastest sandbaggers in town. I think that was the, the terminology. Is that correct?
Trying.
Okay, accomplishing, allegedly. Landon? Okay, you got some backing. Um, but I wanna just thank everyone. The city staff, the volunteers, you don't hear anyone complaining about the work that they're doing. And this isn't easy work. It's hard stuff. But everybody's coming together because they know what's the risk if we don't do it. But it's what makes Spanish Fork the best city in the world, in my opinion, is that volunteer heart. So thank you. That's, um, that part of it. Um, a lot of things have happened in the last two weeks. Um, the community garden, um, their website has a lot of classes on it, so go check that out. It's an awesome opportunity to learn how to garden if you don't know how. Um, and it's really cool. I think it's twenty dollars to rent a space for the summer. Um, check that out. Arbor Day celebration, Bill put on a great program with the, with the elementary kids there and talking about trees and the importance of them, and that was great. Library Hall, Miss Spanish Fork, um, all of those things have been incredible. Um, and also, we've had a lot of things going on with the chamber, so I'll invite Kathleen up to talk for a second about the Chamber of Commerce.
This is so beautiful in here, you guys. Really exciting day. Thank you, Jesse, for the time. Um, I wanted to actually start off with a quote that I had shared with Jesse on our Chamber Today television show on Spanish Fork Channel Seventeen. I'm sure you guys all watch it. Um, but it says, volunteering is the ultimate exercise in democracy. You vote in elections once a year, but when you volunteer, you vote every day about the kind of community. You vote in elections once a year, but when you volunteer, you vote every day about the kind of community you want to live in. And I thought that was really applicable to what we have going on right now, seeing everybody pulling together. And I, I think we all hoped that this would happen, but seeing it really happen, it's pretty amazing. We are all super lucky to get to live here, work here, and do business here. So a lot of you guys have mentioned a lot of the ribbon cuttings and events that we did. We have had a lot of ribbon cuttings, a lot of new members. I don't know if you guys know, but this year, this month, April marks one year in my role as the President and CEO of the Chamber. So thank you guys so much for your support this past year. We have seen enormous growth in the Chamber. I've been crunching numbers just because we're kind of at this annual mark. And we've seen a net gain of eighty new members since I took over this role, which is, just for point of reference, that's almost a third of our membership base that we have grown in one year. So that is phenomenal. We're super excited, keeps us really busy with lots of new ribbon cuttings. And we'll be having more as these summer months roll out. A lot of people joined over the winter time and just as you Mike didn't want to have their ribbon cutting during the winter. So we're gonna be keeping busy, which is great. Um, I did want to highlight just a couple of things that you guys did not mention that we've been up to. I was, had the pleasure of going to Washington DC for a week on a networking and kind of delegation trip for the Chamber. It was a fantastic experience. Several of you encouraged me to make the initiative to go. And it was a great experience for me personally as well as professionally. And also really good for Spanish Fork. It was really cool to go and represent us and, and see some of the people on the trip. I don't think they had been to Spanish Fork for a long time or really paid attention to what we're doing here. But their perception was sort of that we were small and, and all we do is farm, you know, over here. And so seeing us on that trip and representing, you know, as this, this business forward area, they were pretty surprised. So I, I think we made some really good connections on that trip and, and presented ourselves really well. So they're curious about what we're doing down here in Spanish Fork. So another thing, we celebrated Business of the Month today. We were celebrating Venue Sports Cards. If you guys have been to that shop, if you haven't been, it's on one-one-five-three Expressway Parkway. It is a gem in our community. Phil is the owner and he works really, really hard to make it a safe space for teens, kind of like what Scott was talking about with the library. It's another area that he focuses on making sure kids feel safe there, they feel like they've got a place. He knows every single one of his customers' names. And I'm not joking, he, he writes them down when they come in, so he remembers them. He remembers their families, he remembers what they like, so that way he can cater specifically to them and make them feel safe and seen. And that's pretty fantastic. So check out Venue Sports Cards. Also, coming up this month, we are celebrating our Community Partner of the Quarter, which is the Spanish Fork Parks and Recreation Department. They help us so much to do what we do. They help us using up the buildings, they help us with the sports park for the Easter egg hunt. They help us facilitate a lot of the things that we do, so we're excited to celebrate them. We're gonna be celebrating them on May eleventh at noon at the Parks and Recreation Building. And then we have our golf tournament that is gonna be on May tenth. So hopefully we'll see you guys there to support the Spanish Fork team. And last but not least, we are looking for nominations for Business of the Month for May. So if anybody knows of anybody that's doing something fantastic in the community, that runs a business or a business that is in, you know, development, please let us know so that we can recognize them and help to support them in our community. Thanks for the time you guys.
Alright, and then I wanted to talk about the Youth Arts Festival. Nick, if you can pull up the website. So tonight at midnight, so mark your calendars or your alarm, the Arts Festival registration will start. Classes that are popular will fill up quickly. They, they fill up fast. So make sure you get signed up. It is June fifth through the sixteenth. Shane's got something smart to say.
I'm just gonna, I'm not gonna say it.
I see it.
If we continue at this pace, we can sign up before we leave tonight.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to go for. Um, and then, uh, so make sure that we get signed up early because it will, it will run out. So, and that is all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Carden, take as much time.
Absolutely, this is good, I'm just messing with you.
Councilman Argyle.
Yeah, or you can go last if you want to yield the change.
This is great. And not to, uh, so a couple of things just to, on our spring cleanup. And they showed those pictures. So I just drove by and seen there was one, one that was full, there's a phone number there. I called the phone number, she said within an hour there'll be a truck there to get it out of there. And there was, so no reason to have this. We're, we're better than this. And this, this is such an awesome thing for us to do this. So please, please just take a little more care about what we do and where we go because we've made preparations to make sure we do this. So many things, just the library. When we think about six years, eight years it took us and needed to be here sooner maybe, but such an awesome experience for me to be here. And the two things that I remember is the children that were there. I don't think there was enough parents to calculate that there was that many children. It was unreal. And the Westland Construction I just mentioned, I says, just out of curiosity, when was the last time you had this many people at a building that you opened up? And he laughed, he says, we've not ever had this many adults, let alone the children who are here. And the next thing that was what Scott mentioned also, as they were leaving, they had books in their hands. Take them home to read and reading is such an important thing. And I, I mentioned that because my, my dad had a habit of reading. And when he couldn't find something to read, he'd sit down and just open up the encyclopedia. I did not inherit that and I am so upset about that. But I have electronic books that the library has, the magazines that you can read online are so wonderful. And when you drive truck like I do or where you ride the train, you can sit and listen to these books and they're so great. It's not reading, but it is still educational and I've enjoyed it. And they have such a hundred and forty-five thousand audiobooks. So grateful for this library, I'm grateful to be here and be a part of this. This has been a long time coming and it's such an awesome. I sit up here, these guys are way too away. Seth's got to stand way too away. And Dave Euler and Susan, you're too far away. You need to be closer. It's such an awesome big building. It's such a change from, and I can't even imagine what, uh, those that met in the building that was sitting here, the old Nebo School District Office, and they said they were shoulder to shoulder. Rex Woodhouse said we were shoulder to shoulder and there was only room for, I think he said, about six people to come into the building. So we have come such a long, long ways, I'm grateful for that. Rotary today, for the last weekend, they've had an opportunity fundraiser. They've run the Snack Shack down as they've had the track and field. I went there today. I didn't even make cotton candy, there was two people making it and I had it in my hair, Chris did too. It seems to get everywhere. I know they put it on them sticks and handed them out. But when I went home and walked in the door, my wife said, what can I smell? It was cotton candy that she could smell because it's all soaked in. But they had such a good success and the kids, and I learned one thing. Uh, when you get down to what's left and all you have is diet drinks and water, the kids will take water. So if you need your kids to drink water, put diet drinks in your fridge and they'll drink the water. So, so grateful for, and they've talked about what's going on with our flood and our preparation. I'm probably, oh, Chris, and probably Dave Euler will remember the flood of eighty-four. I remember it very vividly. Thanks Seth, Chris, Dale, all, everybody that's been a part of being so organized. I remember back then, and I think what we did is when the river broke, then we responded. The county showed up with trucks and then we tried to plug a hole real quick. And as Kevin has showed to his neighborhood, those homes weren't there then. And that was a flood zone. What they've done with volunteers. And I've gone down there, yesterday I sat and I actually got a really good job yesterday. Nobody was tying the bags and there was a whole bunch of sandbags. And I thought, I can tie a knot, so I sat down, started tying knots. And there was a lady, two ladies there that were filling the sandbags. And every time they sent a sandbag between, for me to tie a knot, they told me thank you. And I just thought, I, I should be thanking you, you're the ones doing the work. But everybody was smiling, or Seth had all them people, they were having a good time filling sandbags. Seth had them yelling and screaming and having a good time. Such an awesome, Spanish Fork's volunteers. They showed up in groves at a time where we needed them. And I know that those people who's built that wall will be so grateful. And we'll get through this, uh, we got through eighty-four. It, it took some, took some time to get through it and we still got a snow. Somebody told me they flew in today or yesterday over the mountains and there's a lot of snow still there. But we'll get through it. And we'll get through it and we'll be better for it on the other side. So grateful for the employees, tireless hours they've put in. Organizing us, keeping us going, organizing the volunteers to come and do this. And, and we're prepared. And if you're prepared, then you don't fail. So we'll, we'll be great. And it's been so awesome to watch the community rally around what needs to be done. And I'm grateful for that. And, uh, as I said, in eighty-four, uh, and there's more snow, more snow up there. But we needed it, we prayed for it, that's the thing. Now we're praying to temper it just a little bit, but he understands our issues and we're grateful for the water that we are getting. We are still living in a desert and we still need to do that. Grateful for the opportunity that I had to be a part of this library hall and its process to be here. It just tickles me, think to, to be here in this. And, and everybody you talk to is, is so set back with how wonderful this building is and how beautiful it looks. So thank you Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Argyle. Councilman Marshall.
It's tough to follow all that. I, I just want to express my thanks to the city and, and our community to, to, to coming together to, to help with the flood. What I thought was really cool, we talked about it before and, and, and before it all started and, and I was on the, sort of on the side of how much taxpayer dollars do we want to spend protecting homes that chose to live there? And I think what was really cool about how it all worked out is the city put together the framework for something to happen and then the community came together. So it wasn't a city event, it wasn't necessarily a Spanish Fork City thing, it was a Spanish Fork Community thing. Led by Chris and Seth and, and yesterday the mayor, running around like a little bit crazy yesterday, doing some things and, and jumping on the, on the news. But we, y'all put the framework together and allowed the community to participate and they stepped up. Those videos, that, that video that Kevin showed was just so indicative of what our community does. In a time of need, they come rushing. Uh, and, and Chris and Seth, thank you for putting the framework together to make that happen, so it was amazing. Got to go to Miss Spanish Fork this weekend. Three bright, intelligent women doing what they do. It was, it was fun to watch. We're well represented with those five ladies. And then the library opening, we missed Kier that day. Uh, and he came, he came tonight to see the result of the labor that he put into getting to this point. Need to, need to thank Stacy a ton for her effort, bringing this all together. But the council before this one really took on the burden of, of making the hard decision and building something that is going to be an asset to our community for a very long time. And we are very proud and we will always be very proud of this place. So thank you Stacy, thank you for the, thank Chad and the, and the council before, the three of us were on it. That took a lot of courage and we're here today, so thank you very much for that. I'm probably gonna end it there, otherwise Jesse's gonna give me crap for going too long, but, um, thanks.
What else you got? Have you got something? Okay, alright. Thank you, Councilman Marshall. My council comments really quick, we'll have Seth give us a, an update of the, the river. This event is ongoing, obviously as we all know, we still have high water, we still have record snowpack, followed by record heat, and that's a combination of what's going to, to be down this river. So if you could give us an update really quick Seth of where we're at, what we're looking at.
Well, he pulls it up really quick, could I do one thing real quick? Caleb back there, that kid has been at every single event, every single sandbag filling. Like, he stepped up, he's what makes Spanish Fork great right there.
He was there all day Saturday in our neighborhood, piling sandbags, so thank you.
I was wondering, I was wondering how I recognized Caleb, and now I know, yeah. I remember there a lot, thank you.
He was at the golf course last night.
Yeah, that's right.
He like put on an orange or a green vest and started supervising. Nice job.
Good work. We were ready, man. So this is a, this is a, a quick report, I'll be about as quick as each of you. Shots fired.
Throws shade on the first meeting in the new place.
So it's been an active week and, and Kevin, not, you're not the only part of the town, you're not the only residents that have reasons to be concerned. This little guy right here was really concerned this morning. You can see he was clinging to the last piece of dry ground that, that he could find. And if you could look in this little snake's eyes, it was, I don't know where, I don't know where to go. I left him there. I'm not picking him up. I knew what it was when I saw it, I, I've heard that story. So this is where the snowpack is, that big red arrow. And since the last time we met, it's come down quite a bit and that's a good thing. But that's the reason why we're seeing so much snow, sorry, so much water in the river as it is. It's quite impressive to see that this was the flood of nineteen eighty-three and it started right there and you can see about where we are. So we still have a ways to go and, and to be able to predict what will happen is becoming next to impossible. So we're, we're gonna see a peak this week and, um, and then we imagine we'll see another peak again, but we'll just, every ten, every day we see a ten-day forecast and we get a better sense and understanding of what the weather will do. This gives you a, a, kind of a quick shot at about what the area is of our snow basin. This is by no means a, a real representation of, of the area that our, that our river covers, but all of those mountains between Spanish Fork and Soldier Summit and to some point north and to some point south feed into what drains into the Spanish Fork River. So we, we have a lot of snow and a lot of area that, that is covered. This is something that some people wonder, and I've seen some chatter on Facebook, I've heard some questions in other places. How, how does the river work? And it sure seems like it's gone down today and, and this is how the river works. We effectively refer to this as the river tide. I'm sure there's a more appropriate term for it that a hydrologist would use. I just got my hydrology license last night when I stayed at a Holiday Inn. And so it didn't come with that right language. But we call it the river tide. It peaks at about two AM, along the river it peaks at about three AM, the gauge it's two AM. And then there's a trough every day at about two PM. So by the time people get up and are enjoying the river, uh, maybe on the trail and things like that, chances are it's already begun to recede from the high point. Usually though, you can see the remnants of the high points as you look along the trail or along the river banks. So if you, uh, don't get up and see the peaks, it's not worth it. But the, the river will be high at about two, two o'clock, three o'clock this morning. And then about two or three o'clock in the afternoon, it, it hits that trough and then begins to go up again based on the weather. This is a view of, of how wide the river is in some of those areas. And, and if you, if you can remember, uh, the river was, maybe the, the channel was about from here to there in, in, uh, you know, maybe two, two or three weeks ago, certainly all summer long. Maybe about fifteen feet wide is the channel and right now it's about seventy, eighty, ninety feet wide, depending on where you are. This is a look at one of our concerning locations of, uh, the, uh, of the river. This is the I-15 Bridge at the west end of our community. And, and you've got some storylines, these lines right here on the bridge. Those give us indications of, of how high the water is flowing. Some, uh, some brave employees, in fact, one of our employees recognized today and a few others were in some boats and painting lines on those bridges a couple of weeks ago, so we could use those right now. And last night, what did we see? Six inches, maybe eight inches of, of gap. Pardon? Freeboard? My, my hydrology license just got another, another, another certificate. And, and that is, it'll, well, I imagine it'll get closer tonight as we'll likely see a few more inches of rise at this particular location. Uh, this is us checking the, probably the most Uh, this is us checking the, probably the most concerning location. This is the Leland Bridge or the bridge at the Wasatch Pallet. You can see right here that water is lapping onto the bridge right now. So it's reached the point of this bridge. There's a span there, let's call it maybe eight feet, where it's, it's hitting the bridge right there. This is the crown of the bridge. And with this scientific measuring stick that we used, we were able to determine that it was ten inches from the crown. And so Chris, what do we expect tonight? You want to go for milkshakes? I already owe a couple, so double or nothing. You pay Dave if, if I win? You think it, three inches left? I'm not betting anymore. This is the best tool that we have in predicting the river. This comes from state hydrologist's office. And when we were, when we were doing some of our work and, and trying to understand, you know, with a ten day forecast and the river, the old graph that we were working on did something like this. It's kind of straight up and didn't quite get to that action stage. But we didn't have the ten day forecast past eighty-one degrees, eighty-two degrees, you know, and, and you get seventy-seven degrees after that. And, and you start to look at it and when you don't have the ten day forecast, you don't know what the margin of error is. And, and so that's really when we started a lot of action last week on Thursday more, or Friday morning. But we expect that we'll get probably at twenty-two, maybe twenty-four CFS this week. Today was kind of warm, a little bit warmer than, than predicted. So we'll just keep watching it. But twenty-four CFS is a lot. It'll, it'll test the limits of some of those lower spots that we watched. There are probably three specific trouble spots that we've got our eyes on. It's an eight mile stretch of river. So when, when we put out the emergency declaration, the, the community, some people, as they read that, they think the whole river is going to flow out across the whole eight miles. And that's absolutely not what the case is. But at the moment, there are probably three spaces, places that we're watching in particular. And then depending on how high the river goes, we may have more places that we start to watch. These are some, some more pictures of what, what you guys were talking about. And really, this is the most important picture. Proof that the world record was set right there. Forty-one seconds, forty-one point seventy-one seconds. I dare anyone to try to beat it.
Tyler was asking for a recount, so.
Tyler can ask. This is the number one team right there.
To fill how many bags?
Uh, one revolution of eight, forty-one seconds. So, but what, here's what my favorite part about this picture is. This is after two hours of, of really strenuous work. And we did this, to their credit, uh, they did this. I actually was just the cheerleader. They did this after about an hour and a half. So they were, they weren't physically fresh, right? You get pretty tired. But we absolutely had a rhythm and a great cadence. And some of these kids, these soccer girls, they, they were just slapping those bags down on the tubes like they were tying, they were doing some roping in the rodeo and they were, they were doing the hooey lift afterwards. It was impressive. And yeah, forty-one seventy-one, we beat the football team. That's all I'm going to say. That's my quick report.
That's it?
That's it. Any questions though from you? I'm happy to answer them or staff can answer as best we need to.
Any questions for Seth or staff?
I had a resident reach out to me asking if we're going to be closing any of the trails down.
Absolutely, yeah. So we've got different signs out there and Dale's Cruise, the, the sports park area and, and any place that gets underwater will close it off. Of course, we've got closed signs underneath the Main Street Bridge and underneath West Park Drive Bridge. Can't go underneath there. We anticipate this more, or tonight, tomorrow morning, that we might see places along the sports park where it could get underwater. It will probably recede and maybe open again. But the crews will watch it and we absolutely encourage people to watch, well, be heads up as you're running. And then I think if we start to see those more clearly, we'll be posting those online as well.
So we're only going to close it if the water reaches the trail, right?
Probably, yeah. I mean, unless there's some other imminent reason to, to close it, some danger, there, we could certainly look at that as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The other question that's been asked is, um, the sandbagging form has until today. Will there be more opportunities for residents to help sandbag?
At this moment, we probably have enough. We think we've sandbagged everywhere that we will need. Of course, every day that the water rises, you get a better idea of maybe where you've missed. And looking at some of the pictures, Chris, would you say we have, do you think we have five thousand in reserve right now? Five thousand, maybe seventy-five hundred in reserve? And, and so if we need to restart the operation, we can. We've got that capability for sure. But we don't think we have a need right now. So we're going to pause sandbagging, hopefully forever, frankly. It's a lot of work and, and the residents have been absolutely amazing. But if we need to do it again, we'll, we'll have, we'll let the public know.
I have one more question.
Yeah.
After this is all done, will we need volunteers to come in and help remove all of this?
Absolutely, yeah. It takes just as much work to take them away as it does. Well, maybe slightly less. You don't have to be quite as precise. And, and depending on how the, the sand and, and how the river engages with the sandbags, sand in an untouched sandbag can be used. If it ends up in contaminated, that's the term, with river water. If it's, if it's actively engaged in stopping the water and it gets water inside of it, then we have to dispose of that sand. So, there may be a lot of sand available if people, we'll, we'll figure that out. But yeah, we'll need, we'll need a lot of people to help us pull those off.
It'll, it'll be harder for the bags behind houses. We have, we have some equipment we can use for the others, but behind houses, that's, that would be the particular one.
We did put some sandbags today on a few places along the trail to preserve the Main Street underpass on the sports park side of Main Street. So that should hold off the water as it rises to keep that, that kind of under. The underpass is closed, so there's that diversion that you can go up from the trail to Main Street and then cross there. This morning, or tomorrow morning, we expect that it would probably creep into that, that sidewalk even going up. So we put some sand there tonight, some bags. And then there's a place on the urban forest, which that part is already closed because of all the work that's there. But we anticipate that it'll probably lap up onto that section of trail tonight as well.
Thank you.
One, one thing that we're really concerned about is safety, especially with children. This is very fast-moving water. And so, uh, let's, let's keep children away from this water as, as much as we can. Because if, if they fell in, it would, it'd be almost impossible to get them out for, for quite a bit.
Matt, what did you guys observe today? Anything you want to share?
We had some officers patrolling down on West Park Drive with the students walking from River View. But for the most part, they stayed away from the river. And we'll have officers there in the afternoon just to monitor that. So we'll keep an eye on it as much as we can.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Seth, real quick, one question for you. With, with pointing out kind of the trouble spots that we've got there is that we're looking at in particular, the two bridges on the west end. Will there be any future discussion with the state, with UDOT as far as, do we make any changes to those bridges or do we just wait till there's another incident?
Absolutely. That, and maybe it's important to say, there have been lots of previous discussions about it as well. You know, changing out a bridge is, is pretty expensive. There will be some, there will be good reasons for us to discuss some specific things about that I-15 underpass after this event. We don't think it has quite the capacity that we've understood that it should. And so there may be some reasons that we'd like to explore that with UDOT in the offseason, if you will, this summer. And, and try to see if, if there is some, some issues with the capacity that we're seeing. But yeah, this will be, this will be an ongoing issue and, and if we can get it resolved, great. But I wouldn't put a lot of stock in that immediately because it's, we're talking millions of dollars, right? For a bridge. Maybe, maybe one or two million for the study. Right? Just the study, right? So, I mean, it's something that, it won't be a quick fix, but it will certainly be a part of discussions. And, and if there's some things we can do with the state for maintenance, if we find that, that capacity can be improved because maybe there's some sedimentation that's hardened in those, in those, those tubes there, then maybe we can work on that. But we'll, we'll look at that in the offseason. It's a baseball term.
Anything else for Seth? I just want to reiterate, reiterate, the emergency declaration is, just like Chris mentioned, it is for safety. This river is going to run high for the next three days, the rest of the week. Kids are in school. Please, please pay attention. Let your kids know that exactly what Chris said. This is, it, it may look calm in some spots. It's not. It, it, you, you will not be able to get out of this river at this point if you get in it. So please, please heed the signs, heed the officers and stay clear of the river. Stay safe. We can, we can replace property. We can fix things after they're damaged. We can't, we can't fix a, a lost life. So please, please remind your kids, your pets, and, and see the river if you want to see the river, but do it from a, a safe distance. No more down at the sports park as far as soccer balls or pickleballs or baseballs. If it gets close to the river, you donated one, alright? It's, it's, it's going to live a good life. Down in Lake Shore and, and Utah Lake, it is not worth you testing the bank of, of this river. Because it's testing its own banks, okay? This is, this is high enough that it will certainly test the capacity of, of our river. So that, that is the, the number one reason for that emergency declaration, just to heighten it in all of our minds. You're going to see it higher than it was last night, the night before and the night before consistently for a bit here. And then if we do get a cooldown, we will still see, we'll still be at eighty-three, eighty-four levels. And we'll still have hot days that will, will bring the water again. So, so I can't reiterate it enough. Please, please be careful. You've heard some good stories already. There's, there's, there's more to come. The community is just amazing. The, the city employees are, are just, are just outstanding. Our partners at the, at the state and the county level were, were fortunate in times like these to, to have the lieutenant governor live in, in, in a neighborhood close to the river. We're, we're fortunate to have two of the three county commissioners live in Spanish Fork. They've been fantastic to work with as we've, we've discussed events and discussed projections and, and how to handle this. And so we can't thank those partners enough. Provo City Mayor Kafusi called this morning and, and said, what do you need? And I don't know, an hour, maybe thirty minutes later, there were ten thousand sandbags dropped off in Spanish Fork to help get us started today with what we were doing today. So fantastic partners throughout the state, throughout the, the other cities in, in Utah County. My story, a quick story, and we're going to have lots when this, when we're through this event, is, is it speaks to, to Spanish Fork. It speaks to volunteers. Yesterday when we were down there, it, it makes sense that if you're football players, you start to lose your shirts when it's eighty-five degrees, right? Start working on that tan and show, show people how you've, you've been in the weight room. I get that. But it was interesting to see the, the coach for, for Spanish Fork had one of his big linemen being recruited by Auburn and Alabama. And those, those two scouts showed up to see a kid work out at a Spanish Fork High School. And the coach said, you can come see him lift sand at the fairgrounds because that's what we're doing today. So those guys showed up. Those guys showed up and watched that, that giant of a kid move a lot of sand that day. And that speaks to how our community responds. They, they, they lift when it's time to lift. We've field shift after shift. And it's simply because people want to help, help their neighbors wherever they can. So, so great, uh, great coordination to, to help make this a, a process that, again, we can't control what this river will do. We can't control Mother Nature. But we've done all that we can do to have a, a good chance of, of keeping this river in its banks. So, so thank you. People ask us all the time, how do we remain small in Spanish Fork? We have an event like this where we need help and a lot of people come and smile and lift with each other. So these are, these are the reasons why we live here. So thank you. Can't thank you enough. And watch the website, watch the news releases closely. And we'll keep you posted on everything we know and everything we can to, to keep you safe. If that means some roads by bridges might close, we'll let you know that. Just, just stay, stay close to the news that way. Spanishfork.org/flood is all that information. And, and watch for, for more news releases coming out, so. That's all I have. Anybody else have anything else before we move into the next part of the agenda? Okay. We'll go to consent items, item number six. If there's any questions about the consent items, please let me know. If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
Motion to approve A, B, and C consent items?
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Marshall to approve the consent items. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
The consent items are approved. Takes us to our public hearing item tonight, our only public hearing. Seven A, the ordinance of proposed amendment to Title 15 dealing with water-wise landscape requirements. Mr. David G. Anderson.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, council. We're going to talk about a drought, specifically how we can help make Spanish Fork a more beautiful and attractive place while being responsible with our use of water. And I'm going to cover a handful of different materials tonight in talking about the subject. But it really boils down to a proposal to modify the city's landscaping requirements so that for certain land uses, things like office projects, industrial developments, retail establishments, different things like that are required to design their landscaping in such a way to limit the amount of water that they use. And then on the other hand, the requirements would simply provide encouragement for the largest number of property owners in the town, which are people that own individual, single-family homes on individual lots. We have some material that's been prepared that really is intended to provide some direction and guidance for people in that situation should they choose to opt for something that both can help make their property beautiful, but also to use less water. As we put this stuff together that we'll talk about tonight, I, I really appreciated the involvement and help that we've received from a consultant. We retained Landmark Design. They've worked with the city before, our last two iterations of the city's Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Been prepared by them. We've got a longstanding relationship with that group. They've done a great job in helping put the material that I'll talk about here together. Also, PKJ Design Group, they're landscape architects. They do most of the design work for people that develop property in Spanish Fork. With properties that are being proposed for different types of development. We require a landscape plan to be prepared. Those folks are probably doing more than half of the work, like I mentioned, in town today. And they've been good enough to donate time to us to, to review what I'll talk about here, to critique it and to help us make it as good as it can be. So, that being said, I'm going to slowly stop stalling. Can you pull up the city website? Or is that just Tyler? You good? Great. I'm going to walk people from this page right here, the city homepage, to where they can find all of the material that I'll talk about tonight. So, Mr. Porter, if you can go from the departments tab up on the top to community development. And then on the left-hand side of the page, there's a menu bar, planning. And then from there, same place, left-hand side, menu bar down at the very bottom.
That one wasn't me for sure.
Down at the very bottom, right there, water-wise landscaping. So, community development, planning, water-wise landscaping. So from here, Nick, if you can pull up the presentation that we have there, bottom of the page. We've got a few different materials here. I invite anybody that's interested in the subject to look at the different things that we have on the page. Again, I really appreciate the help that others have given in putting this together. I'm not going to go through every slide that we have here. I'm just going to touch on a few highlights. This was really put together specifically for conversations that we have with the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission discussed this subject several times. You likely remember that the last time we had a joint meeting with the Planning Commission. This was kind of one of the main events that we had that night. This, this presentation tonight with the proposed ordinance, public hearing and so forth, really is for your consideration to take action on it if the council's ready to do so. So from there, Nick, if you can kind of work down to what's the second or third? Yeah, right there, number three. Yeah, right there, number three. The reason for this is there. For the most part, the western United States has been in a pretty significant drought. So, certainly, using water appropriately has been on everybody's mind, and that was a big reason for going through the effort that we're talking about tonight. As part of that, we as city staff, really in the last year or so, started to feel more and more requests from people that were looking to develop property to be able to have options that our current requirements didn't allow for, things that would allow for them to be more responsible with water. That led us to, to have some concerns on the part of staff. We're used to people complaining about properties being unkept and just ugly. And one of the, the best ways that we found to be able to deal with that is to have people install the right type of landscaping to start with so that it can be maintained easily and really to get things off on the right foot. So, we were concerned about maybe making some type of a knee-jerk reaction that would have some consequences that we didn't feel necessarily were good for the community. And then, also, we've talked before about some mandates that have come. For example, the Central Utah Water Conservancy District, they've put forth some fairly stringent standards that they would like the cities in their region to adopt. And just to touch on one of those is really with what is proposed tonight, I think largely they sync up with what has been provided by that group. But we still have one pretty significant difference, and it has to do with how much water their standards, I'm sorry, it has to do with how much turf grass their standards would allow somebody with a single-family home on an individual lot to plant. In short, their standards would allow for about a third of somebody's landscaped area on their lot to be turf grass irrigated, for example, let's say Kentucky bluegrass. And as we've talked with the council before, I've expressed my concern from my position about a number of things related to that, just given the conversations that we have with their residents about how they want their property to be improved and so forth. And at least to date, as I understand it, the direction that we have from you is to not go that route and to employ those standards that have been given by the Central Utah Water Conservancy folks. So, I'll talk in a moment about another way to try to accomplish really the same goal, which is to get our residents to use less water in caring for their properties, but instead of doing it through a mandate, to try to do it by way of encouragement. Go to the next page there for me, Nick. So, I already largely touched on this. I'll go over the third point that we have there in just a moment and maybe even just advance, Nick, to the next one for me. So, these are the things that are contained, speaking kind of high level, in the draft ordinance that's on your agenda tonight. And the first two bullet points, I think, are really, really critical, so I want to emphasize those. These changes would change how somebody can develop landscaping on a non-residential site or even a multifamily site, whether it be townhomes, apartments, condominiums, or anything like that. But what's proposed tonight would not change what people can do with their individual lots. Does that make sense? That has been the topic of a lot of discussion with the Planning Commission over the course of the past several months, and they have asked us as staff to go back in different iterations of this proposal to make those points more and more clear. So, again, what's proposed tonight would not necessarily have, well, I shouldn't put it that way, would not change what people can do with their individual lots. But when it comes to other types of projects, the change is very real. And, for example, the submittal requirements change to some degree, ultimately really boiling down to the fourth bullet point there, which as a landscape architect sits down to design the landscaping that's going to be installed on a particular site, this approach would give them the opportunity to use a certain amount of water and to distribute that water throughout whatever plant material they select to make the site attractive, easy to maintain, and so forth, while providing a certain amount of, of, we call it, area coverage on a property to make sure that we're not just talking about rocks and concrete. And that's the fundamental basis of everything, using a water budget to define ultimately how much landscaping people can use, again, on non-residential and multifamily sites. Does that make any sense at all?
Does this, does this change the amount of water the city will continue to require developers to give us as they, is that going to change or will that remain the same?
Well, that's a really good question. We haven't gotten there, but it seems like this is probably the right time to, to take that step and give that some thought. To date, we haven't considered changing the amount of water that we would exact or require somebody to submit on the landscaping side, but yet this entirely changes how we define how much water somebody can use. So, that, I appreciate you bringing that up. I think we do need to think that through.
Is there, so you have a list of trees on here. Is there going to be, is there lists of shrubs and things like that that are water-wise that they will be able to see? Am I ahead of the, am I ahead of your?
Yeah.
A little bit? So, like if I want to, because I don't have any, I mean, sagebrush uses less water. I mean, I don't have any idea what the trees and stuff, is there a place I can go look at trees and shrubs and those kind of things if I want to change what I'm doing for the time being to these multi-house development communities?
Great question. Thank you, Nick. Great time for a segue. Mr. Porter, if you can go back to that Waterwise page. As I understand it, having, you know, talked now, not just with the two landscape groups that I mentioned earlier, but a lot of others, I think there may be numberless different ways that people could go about using a particular water allotment the right way. Hundreds, likely hundreds and hundreds of different types of plants that they could use to beautify a site and to limit the amount of water that's required. Among the materials that we have been given by our consultant is the Water Conserving Landscape Online Resource List. You could spend months going through the material that's considered to be best practice on the subject that we're talking about. And I really appreciate the professionals that we've worked with that have, have helped prepare this very comprehensive list of places that both professionals can go to, the folks that we're working with to prepare landscape plans, and community residents as they look for guidance as to, you know, what might make sense for their particular situation as they decide what to do with their yards. If you can go back, once again, Mr. Porter, and I'm just going to kind of jump to the end. The biggest resource we think that we've provided, though, is the Residential Guidebook, also found on this page here. Twenty or so pages of information. You can maybe just kind of peruse through that, Nick. This is exactly what it's titled to be. It's a guide that is both there to provide ideas and suggestions, but also some direction that is not necessarily intended to be employed by professionals, but instead by folks like maybe you and me that, you know, may have lawn space or yard space that is entirely just lawn, and we're thinking about perhaps making changes to that. This focuses on not only how to make that beautiful, but also functional, useful, and easy to maintain. Again, just another resource that we've been given, really from the perspective of the belief that we can be a lot more effective by way of providing resources to our residents and some encouragement than we can through an effort to restrict them and to police how much turf grass they have and different things like that.
Thanks. So, this is going to be an ongoing as we continue to approve now the residential, single-family home? Are we going to continue down this road? Is that what you're telling us?
Well, we haven't historically really had much by way of requirements for people when it comes to...
We've just kind of let them?
We have. We, we do very broadly define what it means to have a yard landscaped. And for example, generally speaking, we're talking about new homes. Residents have a year to have their front yard landscaped, two years to have their backyards So, really, more than anything, this, these are suggestions, ideas, guidance, and the like for them. I will mention that as far as the ordinance language goes, we can look through that if you'd like. It's a lot of words, but I do need to touch on one thing that is part of what's proposed tonight. It's relatively new, the legislature and their last session limited city's ability to use what had been a pretty common tool to encourage people to get landscaping installed in a timely way. It used to be that we would require people to provide a, a deposit when a new home is constructed, and that deposit was returned to the property owner when the landscaping was installed. We can no longer do that. So, we've struck that language from what's proposed tonight. And I could go on for so long. I'm going to go ahead and just hold up right there. I want to make clear that, again, the Planning Commission spent a lot of time on this. We really appreciate their effort. They've recommended that this be approved. The Development Review Committee did it long before they got comfortable with that. I'd love to answer any questions that you guys have. And also, this is a lot of material, I feel like, to, to present to the council just over the course of a week or so. We're not necessarily in a really big hurry to make changes. The one thing that is kind of funny from a timing perspective, the state law that I mentioned, that goes into effect tomorrow. So, you adopting this tonight kind of helps clean up that side of things. Nonetheless, we're changing our practice tomorrow in terms of no longer requiring people to provide a deposit before we give a certificate of occupancy for homes, and that effect is something we'll be talking more with you guys about later. But if the council wanted to take more time to review this, staff has absolutely no concerns with that.
Perfect. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll open this up for a public hearing since this is a public hearing and see if that has any more questions come up for Dave. I entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Carden, seconded by Councilman Argyle to go in public hearing. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearing. Anybody that wants to speak about the Title Fifteen Waterwise Landscape Requirements? Yes, please. Just let Tara know your name.
My name is Emily Born. I just had a quick question. So, if I'm to understand, I, first of all, I, I love this. I love that we have a resource on the city website of how to properly design a water-wise landscape, because a lot of people hear water-wise, or as they're escaping and they think rocks and cactus, which is not, completely not what we should be doing. But I did have a concern about a, a program that is available through the, the Water Conservancy District called Local Scapes Rewards. And I'm not sure if a lot of people are familiar with that, but it allows cities to opt into this program where you use these exact methods of designing your landscape and implementing these, and you can get a rebate from the state when you've completed your landscaping project. And I think it's a really great incentive for homeowners. But I, it's my understanding that this is not going to be a part of this new proposal. Is that correct?
Ultimately, that's up to the city council. Who's to speak? Wonderful. Thank you. Sorry, it's a first for me. That's really up to the city council, and I, I think that, inasmuch as the council wants to discuss that further, we've been operating as staff on the idea for the past several months that particularly that provision that I referenced was something that the council wasn't comfortable incorporating into these exact requirements, that limit on the amount of turf grass that people can have on their individual lots. It would be an easy change for us to make to the language here to incorporate that. There probably would be a couple of other adjustments. I'd certainly put them in the minor category that we would need to make to, to make sure that we're fully consistent with the Central Utah Water standards that they've provided. In all honesty, we probably also wouldn't need to take a much different approach to how we, we go about ensuring that people adhere to those standards. Part of our approach by way of encouragement and so forth leads us to, to a point where we don't spend a lot of time inspecting and policing what happens. One thing, in fact, that we've had a lot of questions about as planning professionals that have talked with people at the Conservancy District is how they would propose that cities make sure that the standards that they are providing are followed. We haven't been given a lot of clear direction from them. As a general rule, the inspections that we've done to make sure landscaping's installed, we'd call it a windshield inspection. You drive by, if it looks finished, you know, very, very rarely do you need to get out on site to, to look at that front yard and so forth. Our approach would need to change. We certainly can do that. So, and we'd welcome whatever direction the, the council would give on that.
Thank you, Dave.
Dave, sorry, go ahead, Emily.
Oh, I, I believe those, those, that only would be a requirement for new, new development, correct? I feel like they've had this program for a number of years, especially in, like, Salt Lake, and they've, they're, they've changed it because they feel like they are taking one step forward and two steps back. Because every time someone, you know, an established homeowner changes their landscape, we're building so many more homes where they're just putting down sod. And it is much more effective and efficient to put in these water-wise landscapes before, you know, in a new build rather than putting in sod and then a couple of years later trying to change it. I know Councilman Euler has been looking into this, and Councilman, did, did you find out if that turf requirement was only for front and side yards? Or does it include the backyard as well?
It does not include the backyard. It's only thirty-five percent requirement for front and side yards.
So, I, I feel like that's very reasonable. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Appreciate you coming. Anybody else in the public for this public hearing?
I picked a good night to come. Emily Peterson again. I, I think it's great to be good stewards of the things we've been blessed with, but I, I like to steer clear of, and would like others to steer clear of, any requirements or infringements upon a person's individual property rights. If there's not enough water, then maybe just, and you have a water limit, okay, I can understand that. Then if they want to go over that, or they do go over it, then have an extra charge. That makes sense to me. I love, like, encouragement to, to be water-wise. And I can't, I can't say how much I have loved Spanish Fork University. I can't say enough good things about it. But last week, we were at, out at the airport, and we had some of the water people there, and they were just telling us how we only use like a third of the amount of water that we have, and every year we're going down in the water, our water usage. So, I don't know. I, I think we're already doing a really great job, and it's great to continue to encourage people to... I think we're already doing a really great job, and it's great to continue to encourage people to be water-wise. And hopefully to steer clear of more of the hardscaping or with rocks, because then that contributes to urban heat zones and stuff, or the island effect. So those are just my thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else for this public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing. Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Euler to go out of public... Councilman Carden to go out of public hearing. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're out of public hearing. Discussion back up here. Any questions up here for Dave, for staff?
I have a question. Is this the same thing as the turf buyback in Centessin, Utah? Or is that something totally different?
I think that's what Ms. Bourne was referring to.
Okay, so is... But we have to have 35%?
Maximum.
Maximum grass. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Can I read just directly from the latest that they've given us?
Yeah.
Some of this, frankly, I think you could interpret it a couple of different ways. And we've sought clarity from the folks at the Conservancy District and have been led to understand things a little bit differently than what has been shared tonight. So it simply says, first of all, in one area, that lawn shall not exceed 35% of the total landscaped area. Using general numbers, probably, generally speaking, about two-thirds of a property ends up, of a lot, ends up being landscaped, which would mean that one-third of that two-thirds could be turf grass. So let's use a 10,000-square-foot lot as an example. Let's say that you have 6,500 square feet of landscaping on that lot. After you take the home's footprint and driveway out of the equation, then you'd be able to have a third of what's remaining in turf grass, 2,200 square feet roughly. Maybe enough to have your entire front yard be turf grass, or maybe the majority of your backyard, but not all, and none of your front yard, different things like that. Those are blockish numbers. Does that help at all to try to illustrate scale?
I did email Savannah Peterson. She's one of the individuals at CUWCD that's responsible. I asked her specifically, reaching out to see if it's possible for you to give me a little clarification on some things. I said, "Want to confirm that 35% maximum lawn requirement, turf requirement, only applies to the front and side yards." Her response is that, yes, the 35% maximum only applies to front and side yards of the residential, new construction, new residential construction. In the standards, I did read through the standards above, in the section above where it actually gets to those points, is where it indicates and specifies that it does relate only to front and side yards of new construction. So that's the clarification that I was given from them. Not sure if that changes anything at this point, but that's the direction I was given from the Central Utah Water Conservation District.
And Councilman Euler, this of course is no argument, right? But this is what they've given us. It says, "If only front and side yards are required to be landscaped, we require at some point the whole yard to be landscaped after two years." These standards apply only to the front and side yards. If the backyard is required to be landscaped, these standards would apply to the backyard as well.
So I guess the question then is, do we require backyards to be landscaped for an individual to get a certificate of occupancy?
At this point, we don't require people to have anything landscaped for a certificate of occupancy.
Which means that that would apply to backyards.
Yeah, maybe that... Are we entirely out of the game of regulating landscaping, which there's some question about that?
So, and I'm not saying we should do one thing or another. I'm just specifying or explaining what I've learned as far as the requirements to get the rebate.
Yeah, we... This is the main topic we would love direction on, and maybe specifically to some of these requirements. This is, some of these comments you're sharing are news to me as well. We've engaged with the district, and maybe your consultant has some insights too, Dave. We want to know, I think it's important to understand what you want in terms of those requirements. But that it only applied to the front yard, I'll be surprised if that's how they end up interpreting it to the... If you give them the whole yard to look at. I think they're wanting, I think they're wanting the 35% to apply everywhere. But that, if you want us to be able to qualify for that, then I think we can get some good direction from you to say, one way or the other, you know, we want to qualify, or only if this or that, and we can work to clarify all the details.
So do we have to qualify as a city? Individual owners cannot qualify for that?
As a city, we must adopt their standards, or our residents cannot participate. That's the carrot for the program. That's the stick for the carrot.
And this is the conversation we had a couple of months ago, if I remember right, of the backyard, and how much or how little we would actually have grass.
Correct. Yeah, where we look at images and kind of ideas.
But at that point, we were basing it off of the entire yard, front and back. And so it would be nice to actually have some definite clarification on that point. Even having that clarification does not necessarily mean that I want to say the city now requires you have only 35% lawn in your yard. And I agree that I don't know that we want to be the ones that are policing that.
That's kind of how I feel as well.
So the ordinance that we're talking about today, though, isn't talking about single-family residents. We're talking multifamily, commercial essentially. What is the... Dave, can you give maybe the Reader's Digest version of what the change is from our current ordinance to what it would be if we adopt this percentage-wise?
For single-family homes, no change. You mentioned that. For other things, highlights. Today, we require non-residential uses to provide a certain amount of turf grass. That's a requirement that we developed maybe 10 years ago, when a few industrial sites got developed basically with what's called zero-scape, all rock, maybe a few shrubs here or there. There was kind of an abrasive reaction to that. So we, at that point in time, required, again, the use of a certain amount of turf grass. That's in place today. This proposed change would eliminate that as a requirement. People could still use turf grass, but that would have to fit in to a water budget that would define as they're choosing or prioritizing what types of plant material they use, maybe how much turf grass they use versus bunch grasses, shrubbery, trees, and the like, to meet other criteria that we have included in the proposed ordinance to try to make sure that we don't have all rock, so that things aren't sterile, so that they don't contribute to what's real, which is having hotspots in urbanized areas and different things that we think makes sense to avoid. And it's that simple, I think. I mean, that's really simplifying it, but those are the biggest changes.
So Dave, we do have some requirements then on some minimum landscaping uses, right? How are we currently, I guess, enforcing that or making sure that somebody doesn't come into a home and just put concrete in their entire front yard, right? If somebody were to do that, how are we enforcing that? What are we doing for the minimums that we're asking that would be different than if we were to ask for a maximum? In this case, if we were to say you have to have 35%, no more than that, how would we enforce that as compared to what we're currently doing with the minimums that we require?
Really good question. And I think you hit on the one issue that we've really regulated, which is the amount of impervious surface that people can have on their individual lot. And then we have another level to the requirement that defines how much impervious surface people can have in their front yards.
It is seven o'clock. No, eight o'clock.
Time to go home?
Motion.
I'll make a little bit. Thank you, Brian.
Oh, we're not done.
So whether, just to throw out an example, whether somebody chooses to put turf grass in their front yard or rock and shrubs and that type of a thing, either of those two improvements would be pervious as opposed to concrete, asphalt, decorative concrete, or any of those types of things. Oftentimes, communities limit how much, again, always speaking, I feel like it's totally redundant, but communities are concerned about how much impervious surface people have on properties because it can impact how well storm drain systems work in communities. I think for us, more importantly, it's just trying to have an aesthetic maintained in the neighborhood. Today, we regulate that, and we regulate weeds. Those are the things that we regulate with single-family lots. The exception would be new construction and master plan developments, where today, for example, we require developers to install street trees and some things like that. But that's the exception that applies only to those situations. Not maybe, let's say I'm a property owner that has a 50-year-old home, and I want to pave the entire lot. Should they inquire in our office about whether they can do that or not, we would explain, no, you can't. It's because of those impervious surface requirements.
Do we require any developers of single-family homes to put the lawns in, or do we leave that up to the homeowners to do?
Today, we have a system that requires builders, when they build homes, to provide a construction deposit. It's $2,500 for single-family homes. And that deposit is taken so that, for example, during the construction of a home, if sidewalk is cracked, if curbs are broken, if water meter cans are broken, those are some of the more common things that get damaged during the construction of a home. The city can use those funds to go and make those repairs to the public improvements that are on or adjacent to the lot. And we hold that deposit until the landscaping is installed. When the landscaping is installed, we return that deposit to whoever owns the property at that time. Oftentimes, that is not the builder at that point, but it's the home buyer. So most of the builders that are working in Spanish Fork today, they include that deposit in the price of the home. And we most of the time are returning that deposit to homeowners. Occasionally, I believe D.R. Horton with Quiet Valley, they're making a strong effort to try to get the landscaping done before they request a certificate of occupancy, so they can get that deposit. But we've had that system in place for, I want to say, six or seven years, shortly after Seth became the city manager, that we went that route.
Is this different than what the state legislature's changed and goes into place tomorrow? Or is this the same thing? Are we still able to require that? This is what's going away that you described earlier?
It's taken us some time to make sure we understood that we can no longer do that. We're certain that's where we're at. So what, incidentally now, us and other communities, and I'll mention this, we're not the only community that does things the way, or that did things the way we had been doing them, that deposit kind of approach. Instead, like I mentioned, from the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, homeowners have one year to complete their front yard landscaping. And across the board, every community is going to take the approach of, we'll make a note. When we issue the certificate of occupancy, we will have to send somebody out to check a year later to see if the landscaping's done. And then we make a decision as to what we do from a code enforcement perspective if it's not done at that point in time.
And the only reason I ask and bring it up is because Emily Bourne, there she is. She's not the first one to approach and ask me about these questions. I've had actually quite a few. Not quite a few, but I've had a handful of residents in the last couple of weeks ask me about the rebates. With the governor doing what he did recently, right, with everything disgusting turf and whatnot, there will be more and more residents that are going to approach the city and are going to ask about this program. And I feel like we, as a city council, when we make a decision, we need to understand the reasons specifically why or why not we move in a certain direction. So that's why I'm trying to get my feel for what our decision is going to be.
It almost sounds like there's a lot of details that are still needing to be fleshed out, though, because, you know, we have different interpretations of what it means from the rebate standpoint, right? Not what we're talking about tonight ordinance-wise, but...
Yeah. I would also be curious to know specifically how much of a rebate our resident's going to get. I know when I flipped my strip last summer, I was able to get the rebate because it wasn't a requirement yet. And although it was nice and it did help, it did not cover a lot of what I put into my strip, right? And so I'd be curious to know also, what's the effort we're going to if we're going to require this? What do residents actually get in return?
If I may mention, I don't feel comfortable asking the council to take action on this until we can clearly answer. I feel like the question is, what changes would need to be made to what's proposed tonight in order for it to be consistent with the Central Utah Water proposal? We certainly, in the next couple of weeks, month at the most, can get to those answers with, I think, certainty. So I'm inclined to ask that maybe you continue this tonight. Let us do a deeper dive. I think it's probably going to take some face-to-face meetings with folks over there, which we've had. We can have them again. Some pretty poignant questions on our part to make sure we understand. I would prefer to do that than to have the council act tonight with those questions.
Thank you, Dave. I think that's wise. I think there's some clarity that could be provided to... I know the discussion we had previous to this was, hey, we are in a really good water situation in Spanish Fork. Our residents are very water-wise because they are charged for their water, every drop that you put on your grass. So there's a lot of self-policing that's going on with practices in yards in Spanish Fork, which is not the case in a lot of ways across the state. We've been used as an example. And so to have a little bit of a heavy hand and say, "This is your limit, and now we're going to hire people to tell you what your limit is and check that limit," is a step that's a little tough for the way we're self-policing ourselves pretty good in Spanish Fork. I remember us having that discussion about this when we were first talking about it. But I think it's important to get the clarity of what that square footage looks like before we make the final decision.
For me, it's the clarity of how do we respond to residents when they ask the question to make sure that if I'm giving an answer to a resident, I have at least, you know, have all of the information. So that's what it is for me.
Yeah, it could be, hey, I don't have any money to give you from the state, but I'm also not policing your backyard or how much turf you got.
I'm not telling you how much you can and can't have.
Thanks, Dave.
Yeah, thank you, Dave. I think it's a good recommendation. If there's any other questions, not any other questions, I'd entertain a motion to continue this item.
Just a comment, Mayor, there are some elements of this that become effective as state law tomorrow that you not passing anything, you tabling this item, does not preclude us from following that law. So we will make some adjustments, even though our ordinance will be at odds with state law. We can follow that state law anyways, and we'll get that going starting tomorrow as that becomes effective. So don't worry about that element of tonight's proposal.
Will they cuff Chad? Give him Chad's address if they come looking for something.
Okay. We'll give him Chad's old address.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, don't do that.
Oh.
They're good people.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion to continue item 78 till we get some answers. There's some clarity.
I move to continue.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Carden, seconded by Councilwoman Beck. It's a roll call vote to continue this item. Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilman Carden?
Yes.
Thank you. That item is continued. Appreciate that good discussion on it. Let's move to now item 8A, of new business resolution authorizing creation of inland port authority project area. Mr. Vaughn, call.
Mayor and council, tonight's item is a resolution to give consent to the Utah Inland Port Authority to begin the process to create a project area in our city. First, I want to welcome staff from the inland port authority that are here. Ben Hart, the executive director, Lynn Mayer, the business development... Ben Hart, the executive director, Lynn Mayer, the business development coordinator, Steve Smith, the business director, excuse me, director of business development, Tanisa Wright, the communications manager, and Richard Monson, the public finance manager. We've had meetings with them and they've been very helpful to us in understanding the inland port authority and what it can do for Spanish Fork. Again, as I mentioned, the resolution would be giving them consent to start that process of creating a project area. Dave could tell you, we've had significant interest from different commercial entities looking to do development within Spanish Fork here on the west side of the freeway, industrial, manufacturing, warehousing, distribution, but infrastructure is a problem. We don't have what we need to serve those future lands and developments. The project area would then have a tool of tax differential, which, just like tax increment financing, which you might be familiar with, and those additional taxes as real estate investment occurs over the years can then be used to create those or solve those infrastructure problems and encourage development. Any questions about what we're doing tonight? It's a simple step of...
Just one question, Vaughn. And I can't remember from the conversations when we had our meetings with that, but this can be expanded fairly easy, right? Because we've already...
Yes. You can amend the plan. Once they've adopted the plan, they can then amend the plan. I even put a phrase in the sentence in the resolution that even if additional areas are annexed, those, as long as they're included in the project area plan or amended plan, can be added in. For example, the one that comes to my mind is up there on the State Highway 77, the 40 acres, that's in the process of being annexed now, and they're looking to do industrial development. So it'd be a great candidate to include in the project area plan.
Thanks, Vaughn.
And Vaughn, from here, there would be a couple of public meetings. Do we want to talk about what it looks like?
Yeah, maybe they could explain that better, the staff from the inland port authority, but I understand they need to do a draft plan and notice and a public meeting before they can adopt the actual plan for the area.
Any questions from Vaughn before hearing from inland port folks? Thank you, Vaughn. Any questions? We'll ask you.
Yes, please.
I think we're going to have to charge him for wearing out the carpet already out there.
Got to get my steps in, reduce my time, councilman. So I had some slides, if anybody wants to put them up. I have about 74 slides, it's going to take a couple hours just walking through this.
Not a problem.
No, just kidding. So in the interest of time, I have a presentation that's about 12 slides. I can take you 10 minutes through thoroughly what the inland port is and answer all your questions. If you're more interested in just asking me questions, I'm happy to respond, whatever works best for you, mayor and council. But let me directly answer the question that was asked. So there will be at least two public meetings. The second, we anticipate actually being the adoption of the project area. Those are meetings we'd like to have our board, which consists of, you know, Senator Stevenson, Representative Schultz, we invite other dignitaries and whoever the council mayor would like to have here, and it's as long as we're sure the board's going to adopt it, which we're certainly will, we like to have that kind of as an opportunity to really showcase what we're trying to do. Because I do have the floor, let me just show a couple of slides, if that's okay. If we can go to maybe the first slide, I promise, I will keep this very short.
Take your time. I think that, I think it's important to just methodically go through this. I think it brings some concern for people about what it is and what it isn't. So I'm good taking your time.
Okay, so...
I don't want to speak for the rest of the council, but I will.
He's just saying that because of your comment earlier, Shane, about us taking too much time.
I know. I probably did. It's your turn.
Okay, that sounds good. Well, I appreciate it.
Thanks for being here.
It's my pleasure. Ben Hart, executive director of the Utah Inland Port Authority. Let's go ahead and kind of walk you through what it is that we intend to do, how we're going to partner with you. Let me first say that by adopting this project area, the city council is not relinquishing any type of zoning control or permitting entitlement or anything of that sort. You maintain control over all land in this area. What we're talking about is how we reinvest this money at the direction of the city, working with the city, to make sure that we're providing for good growth opportunities, public infrastructure, making sure that we're helping where we can take trucks off of road, optimize existing rail, not wearing out thoroughfares in the community, but then also providing generational employment opportunities, making sure that your citizens are going to have good jobs here, that your kids and your grandkids are going to be able to stay here in the community as well. So when we're talking about a project area, that's kind of what we're talking about. Our goals are pretty simple, create efficient cargo flows into the global marketplace and make sure that we've got a very efficient logistics system, not only in the state of Utah, but here in this community as well. When we say that, we mean we're really looking to take advantage of a lot of rail that right now is underutilized. I use frontrunner every morning. I'm a huge user, and every morning I look over at all the empty seats that are around me while the cars are stacked on I-15. That's not efficient. So how do we take areas where we're underutilizing such as rail and provide better access, better service, and optimize how many people are using that so that we can create better, more sustainable growth opportunities here in the state? Second, how do we synergize regional economies? That's what we're talking about when we say, how do we reinvest working with Spanish Fork City? Does that mean we're building the roads that the city would like to see here? Does that mean the inland port is taking on the burden of a public infrastructure district? Are there other public financing opportunities we can provide? We also, through this project area, it opens the door for you to access our infrastructure bank, which is upfront money to help with some of that infrastructure in the community that only goes to those who adopt these project areas. Third, how do we strengthen Utah's shipping industry? So whether that's Boeing, whether that's, you know, Amazon, whatever it may be, we've got a lot of shippers. We've got small businesses trying to get their products into the global economy. How do we work with them and create the best logistics system, we hope, not only in the country, but in the world? So if we can go to the next slide, the idea here is, if you're familiar with the concept at the point, in essence, what they're talking about is how do they bring together and coordinate a lot of different resources? So they're talking about research and development, they're talking about local resources, they're talking about state and federal resources. That idea is fantastic, but it works in one geographic location. The concept that we're talking about is that same concept, how do we bring a lot of resources together and focus them on one geographic area to really create what we hope is generational economic returns? So again, all of these different resources coming to bear to create economic inertia in Spanish Fork. If we can go to the next slide. So what this looks like is we build this out. Spanish Fork is a little bit unique. I didn't want to assume that the council would adopt tonight's resolution, so I've not included any pictures of the project area. I knew that those would be included. But what I did want to show is some of the other facilities that we are aware of and have been patterning some of what we're doing after. So this facility is actually in South Carolina. This is not targeted to bring volume in. This is targeted on serving regional communities, or excuse me, regional businesses in the community. So how do they work with the community to try and get more going on the rail? That's absolutely what we intend to do. If we can go to the next slide, this is a facility in Pocatello, Idaho. Sorry. This is a facility in Pocatello, Idaho. And so that's exactly what they've been able to do up in Pocatello. From that entire southeastern Idaho region, they have been able to work with a lot of different importers, exporters, and get them to use a facility, a rail facility, as opposed to just defaulting to trucks on the roadway. And UDOT does an amazing job here in the state of Utah, not just saying that for Councilman Marshall, but UDOT does an amazing job. We are very much a road-dependent state. We like being able to put things on truck, we like getting into our cars, but in terms of sustainability, it's really tough to build your way out of cars and build more roads. It's an incredible expense for the state of Utah every year. If we can't find different methods, shipping methods, we just continue that expenditure without using some of our resources more wisely. The last one I'll mention is probably not so relevant here in the Spanish Fork, but we also want to look at air cargo across the state. So we know there are some significant east coast port opportunities with FedEx and other shippers. In the western United States, we see a significant opportunity for the state of Utah with regards to air cargo. So another lane that we'll be looking at as well. So going to the next slide if we can. The project area, we have one project area that is currently really up and running, that is the Northwest Quadrant in Salt Lake City. It's the 16,000 acres around the airport. Now, as we look at that area, there's been a lot of misconceptions about what it is we're trying to do there. All of the tax differential is not going to logistics, it's going to community development efforts. And so in some cases where we're working with the city, there might be an opportunity to help, and probably will be, to help fund logistical improvements in the area, but then it's also, how do we fund roads? How do we fund other community needs? Research partnerships? I mean, there's a lot of opportunities, even workforce development is something that they've expressed interest in. And so harnessing, again, all the resources from private capital, the state, local, we're able to bring all those pieces together for the benefit of the community. Going to the next slide if we can. So not going to go through all of these, but this is our toolbox. In terms of the project area creation, P3 partnerships, all the way down to sustainable support and potential funding from federal grant sources, having this designation will allow you, if the city wants it, you don't have to, but it will allow you to have new federal funding opportunities as well that were not open to you before also. And potentially, I'm going to mention this as well, the opportunity to potentially clear customs in Spanish Fork as well, which is a nice advantage, not only for air, but also for road and for rail as well. If we can go to the next slide. So how this process works, we're in phase one right now. Basically, this is working for a resolution with the local community. Phase two of this is implementation, so actually taking the resolution, getting that into a project area plan and budget, having that adopted by our board. So again, at least two other public meetings, and then actually starting to implement. We understand there's a strong push from some of the landowners in this area to look at some public financing options, to look at public infrastructure. Those are all things that we can help coordinate with and collaborate with to make sure that it's in the best, done in the best possible way to have the least impact on the community. So you get the best economic without the overburdening of traffic as much as we can. At least we want to be very smart with sustainable growth. Phase three, long-term optimization. So how do we bring in the businesses? Are there incentives that you want us to offer or not offer? Are there partnerships, whether it's research, whether it's workforce, whatever it may be that you'd like us to pursue? All of those things are part of that long-term optimization. And then lastly, I think we've got one more slide. So I'll just say this, Northwest Quadrant is the one that's up and running. Iron County is adopted in April. Spanish Fork, you guys are kind of on deck in this conversation. Box Elder, I had to slip out for a couple of meetings or minutes as Tremont was passing a resolution earlier. We have a few communities in Box Elder County that we'll be working with. Beaver County's already passed a resolution. Juab County next week has it on their agenda, and then Twill County passed a resolution a couple of weeks ago. So that's kind of what we're looking at now. It's not arbitrary in the sense of the communities that we're working with. It is where we see the most opportunity, one with really good infrastructure planning that's been done with I-15, with Highway 6, with rail. Spanish Fork, if they harness the power that can come from the existing logistics that are here, you have the opportunity to really become an economic powerhouse in this county. I think you already are, but I think being able to diversify some of the tech, which is fantastic, but also being able to diversify in terms of what the economic growth is slated for is really a tremendous opportunity. If I were picking one area in the entirety of this county that I think has real promise in terms of future economic growth and inertia, it would be the project area because you're right off I-15. It's just can you play your cards right in a way that will really help you to optimize that growth? And so we're thrilled to be able to have this resolution before you. We want to be able to answer any questions you have, make sure that we answer any concerns. I want to give Dave a huge shout-out. We have not done this for every community, but we've already worked through a lot of the dynamics related to the Spanish Fork plan and budget because that was something that the city council had desired. They wanted to make sure they knew what was happening before we, before you passed the resolution. So at this point, we even got that plan and budget on our website. We've been working with Dave. We've been trying to make sure that Spanish Fork is not only, you know, in the loop, but guiding and directing how that process is going to unfold. So you're not giving up any type of control in this process, but really it is just tapping into that greater partnership.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Appreciate it. If, yeah, if we have some questions, let's ask Mr. Hart.
Got just a quick one. Timeline from phase one to phase three, how quickly, if things get approved through phase one, before you start to see buildings and other infrastructure?
Councilman, as fast as you tell us to. That would be my practical answer. I think in terms of, you know, if we were to look at this and say, of really good cadence, we would say probably a meeting in front of our board in May, and then the second meeting for adoption in June. What we understand, and we're not, we're not, I don't want this to come off as any kind of pressure, but what we're hearing from the development community in our meetings with the city is that public financing is important, so putting together a public infrastructure district, some of those items are probably slated for July, August. Tapping into our infrastructure bank, probably July, August type timeframe. And I think actual, you know, roadway construction, those kinds of things, depends on how fast I think the city wants to move. I'll defer to Dave if he wants to add anything to this, but I would say probably within the next six months, you're going to start seeing action on this because I think, I wouldn't say that to every community, but how well-prepared Spanish Fork is, I think we can move at a pretty rapid pace.
Thank you.
Ben, I appreciate that. Just to follow up, six months, that really is what folks that have already made a tremendous investment in Spanish Fork by way of having purchased many, many hundreds of acres, they have capital that's ready to go. To some degree, they are looking for this effort to progress to the point to where they're confident that we'll be able to tap into public finance to help carry some of the heavier burdens that come with making the area that we're talking about really ready for development. Certainly by the end of 2023, we would anticipate people being ready to go.
Thank you.
I have one.
Yes.
So Ben, I think there's a fear that the inland port, whatever that big monster that we fear, the inland port, will come in and change something. The way I hear you talk, it sounds like we have a vision of what we want this project area to look like, and you're going to come help partner to deliver that vision for us, with us.
Councilman, very well said. You're exactly right. We're not a change agent, we're an enabler. And so we wouldn't target an area within a city where it's multifamily or where it's retail or something like that. These areas where the city has already laid out a clear vision and articulated that, we come in as an enabler to help achieve those visions and not contradict or to change.
Give us more tools in the toolbox to help implement that, maybe speed the timing up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Not all the tools in the toolbox that you mentioned need to be used, but those are the tools we can use.
Right, whichever ones the city wants to use. Yeah, we won't use any of the ones you don't want to use.
Public hearings, the public hearings that would be the next step are located here where the public in proximity can speak to it here?
Yes, so we have one project area up in Salt Lake that we're working on now. We've tried to be in the community that is adopting the final version of that plan. So our intent is to have our first meeting in Salt Lake City on May 11 at 10:00 a.m. And so that's where we anticipate first presenting this plan. And yes, there will be an opportunity for public comment. The second meeting would be in the community, we'll coordinate that with the city. We're anticipating that would be the last week of June, but wherever you would like us to hold it, it is convenient for you and the citizens, we'd be happy to hold it.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Hart.
Of course, thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks so much for being here. Okay, any other questions for Dave or staff? Seth, do you want to chime in on this?
Just a quick comment. We really appreciate the staff. I know there's a lot more of them. I think maybe we should give them all 15 minutes, stand up here and speak. I'm just kidding, they don't want that, but I really appreciate the insights that they've shared through this process and being very willing. We've, I think, we've pushed and stretched them just as much they, well, I don't know, but just as much as we've been pushed and stretched ourselves in trying to consider different ways of improving and getting closer to what we were hoping to do maybe with the RDA, but also improving and enabling, using that word that they shared, enabling us to do things maybe better than we've ever conceived. It's really been a good start to this relationship, and we're excited for what we can see coming from that partnership. So we appreciate the staff.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this before a motion? Any other questions or comments on this before a motion? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve resolution authorizing creation of inland port authority project.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Argyle. Getting used to the voices. Sorry. Seconded by Councilman Euler to adopt item eight A. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Thank you.
We need to move back.
Yeah, sorry. You guys.
I need to switch every time.
Yeah, you guys, the switch has got me a little bit. Thank you. That's, that passes unanimous. Appreciate you being here. Thanks so much. Look forward to working with you soon. Alright, thank you. Okay, that takes us to item eight B, the airport layout plan. I saw some airport people here earlier. And Chris Thompson.
Okay, we have our engineers, J U B Engineering, that have worked really hard on preparing a new airport layout plan, which is basically a master plan for an airport. We're really excited about this. We we need it. We have unprecedented growth being proposed at the airport. And so I'd like to introduce Neil Fraser with J U B. He would like to go through the highlights of the plan and explain that to you answering any questions.
Thanks, Chris.
Please.
This, this is Kim Sylvester. So I work with J U B Engineers as an aviation planner. I kind of head up our planning team. Kim Sylvester is an engineer and does all of the, she likes to get her feet dirty. I keep my shoes shiny. That's how we. And then back here on the back row, wave to everybody, Ruby. Ruby Samuel is one of our, one of our planners out of our office too, who's here with us tonight. These are just in case you wanted to have something tangible, you know, you could touch and feel. Tangible, tangible, tactile. Yeah, thank you. So in order for us to develop a new airport layout plan. We're somewhat required to go through a series of steps to do that. There's, there's kind of a process. It involves doing some public involvement. There's some steps to the study where we have to establish a baseline, understand the existing conditions. And then start to get a feel for what's going to happen in the future, do, you know, forecasting. You're probably familiar with kind of some of those basic planning concepts. And I'll go through just a couple of the highlights here. And then depending on what we see coming down, coming down the pike. We develop a plan for future development at the airport. So our our process started with some public involvement. We reached out to a number of stakeholders. People, users and other people who are involved at the airport. And asked a series of questions about what they think is going to happen. What what do they see or what do they need? What do they think we need at the airport here in Spanish Fork? And then, like I said, we we developed kind of a baseline of existing conditions. And then a forecast and all that kind of culminates into two things. We write a narrative report that goes with it and then the airport layout plan that you have in front of you. I'll get into the the handouts in a minute, so it'll make more sense. Here's what we heard. We we talked, on the left is is a list of the the various parties that we that we talked to. And on the right are kind of the main themes. The number one reason for us doing this project right now was to figure out what to do about the length of the runway. So if you look at the paper in front of you, the the plan, I'll call it the yellow plan, the one that's yellow. That's, that is the layout plan that was done primarily in two thousand and eleven. And it shows off the end of the north end of that runway, a fairly significant extension to the run, future extension to the runway. And what we, the information that we got from the city and the airport staff and airport board was that we don't think we need that extension in the future. And in fact, having that extension on the plan and showing the future need to acquire property. Was limiting other development in the city. That was topic number one. Some of the other things that we've heard, I won't go through the whole list, but some of the key points. Tie down space was a big one. There's, there's not any tie down space available at the airport anymore today. Pretty well run out of space for people to come in and and park aircraft and tie them down. That is being somewhat remedied by the project that we'll have going on this summer. But that'll continue to be an issue going forward as we see what the growth looks like. And then you should probably be aware that although we're seeing a lot of growth, a lot of larger aircraft coming in, a lot more aircraft coming in and out of Spanish Fork. There is some of the users out there whose general feeling and sentiment is they don't want things to change. They want it to be kind of that small town airstrip that it always has been. But the reality is it's a public use airport. We can't keep people from using the airspace and the runway. So the airplanes are going to come in, whether those other guys want them to come or not. Our job is to make sure that the airport is as safe and and has all the amenities that they need to make it the best place possible for for aviators and aircraft owners. So here's, here's what this all kind of boils down to. We try and figure out what it looks like. And then our our future plans and our designs have to fall into not only the criteria of those different amenities that people are are concerned about. But also we have to decide what our our baseline aircraft type is going to be. And we do that through a couple of different things. It comes down to the category of aircraft and the, and the way we categorize aircraft, really three different ways. One is the speed at which the aircraft operate. Second is the size of the aircraft. And the third is how much the aircraft weighs. So you can see on the chart up there, A, B, C, D, E, those are the, that's aircraft speed. And then one, two, three, four, down through six is the size of the aircraft. And then as it, as it pertains to weight, really that's where the engineers get involved in how they develop pavement strength and cross sections of pavement and stuff. That guys like me that use markers and colored pencils don't care about. Right now, today, the category of B two aircraft is the, is the critical design category that we have to look at. Those are aircraft that are decent size and and have a significant impact. The plan that was in place before from two thousand and eleven. Was developed under the impression that more larger aircraft would start to use Spanish Fork. Category C for speed and maybe even up to size three for the design group of of aircraft. We have not seen those types of aircraft come into Spanish Fork very often. In fact, I'll jump ahead to. I'll come back right here. This is what the operations looks like up through the end of last year. Now, we have a better system in place today with the, with a, an operation called Ver Tower that's doing a better job of counting aircraft. But but previous to that, we had, the best information that we had was this. And you can see how much operations are growing. But if you look in at the very far right-hand side of that, where we have C one, C two, C three listed, all of those aircraft are only coming in a few times a year. And in order for us to consider that size aircraft critical, we have to see over five hundred operations in twelve months. And we're just not there. So the the evaluation is, it really doesn't make sense for us to have this future extension of the runway there and protect that land. Or do we want to remove that from the plan and keep the runway as it is today and not consider additional length? Knowing what kind of aircraft we think will probably come in the future. Let me back up just a little bit.
So they can, they can land there.
Yes.
Currently safely.
Right.
We just don't see them.
We don't see them in enough numbers to make it our design criteria category. The rules for landing and taking off really come down to the pilot in command. That pilot, he or she can decide if it's safe for them to operate. And and ultimately put their aircraft down wherever they, wherever they feel it's safe to do so. And they can use the runway as it is. However, if we had more of those coming in, it would change our design category. It would, it would expand our safety areas. It would really kind of impact the airport in a lot of ways that we might be careful about doing.
If if it was designed that way, would we see more? Is it sort of a chicken and egg thing?
There is a concept for that out there, but when it comes to funding, most of the funding comes from.
Actual use.
FAA and it, yeah, you have to prove it before you can get it kind of. So we're not likely going to be able to do a whole lot by the way of inviting more of those in. Also, as you increase in those larger category aircraft, there's just less of them in the world. And and so to see those numbers come in, you'd have to have a pretty significant operation of some sort, probably based here. Otherwise, it'd be hard to see that many visitors in those size aircraft. More than likely.
One of the other things that I learned this last couple of weeks is that it increases some of the safety things that we have to put in or safety ranges. That could limit some of the development that's being proposed at the airport too.
Right. We would run the risk of having to tear down hangers and things that are out there today, possibly. Just to give you a kind of a concept here, nineteen ninety-eight, there were seventy-three based aircraft. Last year we got up to two thirty-seven. I checked last week and I think we're over two forty at the airport now. That is tremendous growth. That is, that is not like any other airport in the, in the Intermountain West really. To, to, to claim five percent annual growth is huge. And if we project five percent annual growth out into the future, in twenty years, there'll be more than six hundred aircraft here. It's hard to imagine that there would be more than six hundred aircraft at Spanish Fork. I conservatively estimated about a three and a half percent growth. And we could very well get into the four or five hundred aircraft base here at Spanish Fork. Now, again, those are going to be the the size and category of aircraft that that we see today. But it is growing tremendously. And that will come into play here in just a minute. I talked about the operations already. Nineteen ninety-eight, eighteen thousand operations a year. In twenty twenty-one. We accounted for forty-three thousand operations. An operation is a landing or a takeoff. We think we're probably about fifteen to twenty percent low on that number, just because of the mechanism we had to actually count operations. Year to date in two thousand and twenty-three, we're at almost twenty-eight thousand operations already. And that's only four months into the, into the, into the year. So it's growing and it's growing rapidly. So this is the, this is the real question and and the thing that we need the council to to make sure that you're comfortable with. On the top of the screen there and in front of you on on the sheets, the yellow one that you see shows a, an extension of about twelve hundred feet of additional runway space, runway length. That was based on primarily seeing larger aircraft come in. And and would require significant changes in the amount of property that's out there, or at least the control of the property. Because even with, even beyond the length of the pavement, we have to control a significant amount of space beyond that for for runway protection area. All the way up to the highway, really. The one on the bottom is what we have today, sixty-five hundred feet long. It's a good length. It's a decent length. It does limit some aircraft. The recommended length that we calculated, it was actually in the two, the the two thousand and eleven plan as well, was sixty-five hundred and seventy feet. I don't think it's probably worth investing to to move seventy or a hundred feet of pavement. So sixty-five hundred feet is really good, but that is based on accommodating seventy-five percent of the fleet. And at sixty percent useful load at maximum temperature days. And in conditions where you need the most runway length to take off, heaviest aircraft on hot summer days. So most of the time it's adequate. There was an issue last year in July or August, Christian can correct me if I'm wrong. I think it was in July where an aircraft here did use almost every bit of runway to get off the ground. And it was such a concern for them, they ended up taking their airplane and going to Provo instead of staying in Spanish Fork. Just because of runway length limitations. That was a B two aircraft. It fit within our design category, but it was on the upper end of that category. And one of the heaviest B two aircraft out there. So limiting the runway length that we have will affect some operations. Again, we don't see significant numbers of those, but it does limit how many come in and and what types. So that's, that's really the question. And then go ahead. Oh, me. I'm doing my own. So number one is the runway length. What do we want to do about runway length? And as the proposed A O P or layout plan here shows, we've taken that extension off. The second thing is overall development. So this goes back to how many aircraft we think are going to be here. We're seeing a lot of pressure right now. There's multiple flight schools that want to be based here at Spanish Fork. It's a desirable location. Hanger space is relatively cheap compared to the region. There's available property and there's, there's some really good development plans with some of the, some of the companies and investments that are, that are going on out there. This, this is a big deal. I don't know of another airport in the state that is growing this fast. And if this all, if this all happens, there's going to be significant changes to Spanish Fork Airport in a very short time. We've projected that what you see in blue is probably less than ten years worth of development. And the purple would take us out into the twenty-year planning horizon. That might all happen a little faster than that actually, which is atypical of what we normally see on these types of plans. But but that's kind of the development that we've proposed and largely based on proposals that have already come to the airport. The last point I want to make, it goes back to the the length of the runway and why that's so significant. As we've discussed, the the need for that extension with the FAA. They've really pressed us really hard on, are you sure you want to do this? Are you sure you want to take this extension off? Their, their recommendation would probably be to leave it on there. They always want to protect for additional space and and to have more length, have more land, more property. It's a trade-off though, because that you are limiting that area for other types of development, other commercial development that's interested in using the land off of the, off the end of the runway. By taking the extension off the runway, what we're telling the FAA is that we're never going to extend the runway. And if we ever wanted to, again, they're probably not going to allocate funding to acquire property or or to do that work and and extend the runway. So it's kind of a significant choice to do this at this time. Something that I feel the council should be aware of. But our proposal is that you probably don't need the extension by and large. So it's, it's really this board's decision on what to do with that. But if you're ready, we're ready to move forward with this plan and submit it to to FAA unless there's other items that we need to consider and discuss. That's what I have. Questions?
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any questions?
So when we're talking about the length of the runway, you said an aircraft took up the whole runway. So there was, because of the weight of the plane?
Yeah, hot summer day.
The cargo of the plane on a summer day.
Hot summer day, aircraft weight and getting enough speed.
To get up.
To get off the ground.
And needs that runway length. Because when, so they did something with Gail Haverson and there was a military plane that wouldn't land here, smaller. So that would have been the same thing. It's because of the weight of the plane.
Possibly.
It was a carrier, sea carrier.
Yeah. Weight and I would just emphasize that conditions make a big difference. If it's wet, if it's hot, if it, you know, things like that. And it ultimately comes up, comes down to the pilot in command to decide what to do with his aircraft. Yeah. Weight makes a big difference.
And this twelve hundred feet, and that's all we're talking, this twelve hundred feet, right?
That's what's on the plan as a twelve hundred foot. It's actually a, it's actually a shift of the runway as it sits today, plus an extension of twelve hundred feet.
Yes.
We, we are also at, you know, forty-five vicious hundred feet in elevation, which makes a difference to air density as well. So it's the heat of the day and I mean, if we're at sea level, it'd be a different story, right?
Is this the plan or the plan in front of us?
There, well, that's the most up, the one you have printed is the most up to date.
Okay, just checking.
I submitted the the presentation a couple of weeks ago, but yeah.
So we know the why we want to shorten it or not lengthen it. Well, do we, explain to me the downside of leaving it as is?
With the extension.
Yeah. Do we, would we have to make more investment? Or if it it seems like if we just leave it in the plan and don't do anything with it, we just sort of protect ourselves in the future.
The the downside is that there's there's currently proposals in front of the city to develop that property.
The developed part on the west side?
No, 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 sorry, off the north end.
Oh, off the north end, sorry, okay.
Private development on property that the city does not own today.
Okay.
All all that area under the yellow is is property that the city doesn't own.
And those property owners, those property owners with their current plan would not be able to develop because we have this registered with the FFA for this potential runway extension.
Right, they can't get funding because they don't have the controlling interest interest over the property when the when the city's showing future property acquisition.
The the proposals to develop that area is actually what triggered this look at the AOP. Because we didn't want to say no to them if if the need for the longer runway was really not there. And so we took a hard look at it, really evaluated it for some time, and then came back and said not likely that that we would get much use out of that extension.
That extension could be on your plan for twenty years and you might never build it, but you tie the land up.
That was the discussion, I'm sure, amongst the airport board as well.
Yeah, the board itself didn't have a lot of comment, but a lot of the stakeholders that we talked to. Most of the comments from the stakeholders were that the adequate, that the length was length was adequate today and that anybody who needs more length is going to go to Provo. Is there any more you'd add to that, Christian or Chris?
I just I just touch on the ground assurances. Is that every time I accept?
This is our first chance to whip you into shape and have you come to a mic. He's telling me behind you. Come on, Chris. Both of you, come on up.
Christian.
Christian.
It's good for me, I can be done.
So what's your question again?
Well, the the thing that the the real issue, I think, here is is every time that we accept grants from the federal government, we we agree that we are going to protect the area around the airport. And that and it's it's, we're in a position now where we really can't stop the development on the north end of of the runway. The FAA is not willing to, you know, put up any money to to buy and protect that land. And so we really, as a city, we can't do the things we need to do where every time we sign a grant, say, we're going to do these things, we're going to protect the area around the airport. There's really nothing we can do. And so, you know, and and the farther it gets down the road, if if, you know, development gets built and now all of a sudden now we are not only up by land, we often have to tear down buildings and lengthen the runway. And, you know, I really don't, you know, what his study has shown is that that the type of aircraft using our airport are going to stay the same more than likely. We'll just have more of them. And so for us to be responsible and for us to do a responsive plan for the future of the airport, you know, as as past staff, this is what I feel like, you know, based on my experience, is the most prudent way to plan for the airport.
And I'll just add that because of our proximity to the Provo Airport, you know, they're five miles from our airport, they can take the weight and the responsibility and draw those larger aircraft. And it because of their proximity, you know, I don't I don't personally think that we would have an issue taking the runway extension off of our plan.
Did you say the same, Chris? Thank you. Good insight. I think that'd be my question of when we see a a a proposed development like this and and that's hundreds of millions of dollars of investment around our airport. What I'm getting the assurance from and getting head nods from is that this capital investment by by private people to 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 make that happen are in accordance with, that that could go forward with this runway being sixty-five hundred instead of being out there.
Right, right. I I don't think that there's any of the development that's coming in that is saying we're coming in under the condition that you're going to exercise your plan to extend the runway. Have you heard that from any of the, I don't. None of the pressure that we've heard has has been, we want to be here because we see you have an extension. I think they feel like what's here is is pretty darn good, and there's available space to to develop, which is a commodity on airports all across the West right now.
And echoing what I was saying earlier, just a development that was doing a proposal earlier this month, right? If we change or if we add that extra runway, it there is potential that it causes ripple effects throughout the airport of changes that we would have to make because of the infrastructure that would be needed. You're the one who brought that up.
So it might do opposite instead of inhibiting it.
Perfect timing.
Yes, mayor.
Lengthening the runway would increase the the occurrence or ability for the larger aircraft to come in. And those larger aircraft, aircraft in excess of sixty thousand pounds, hundred thousand pounds, they start doing damage on the on the pavements. The pavements currently are not rated for that heavy of aircraft. They're rated for sixty and below. So it would increase, meaning a reconstruction of the runway and the taxiway pavements, which are, we're about to reconstruct a taxiway. And that's only designed for the sixty thousand pound aircraft. So you would have a significant investment to increase the strength of the the base rock and the pavements below the for the runway and the taxiways if we if with the lengthening and allowing and getting those bigger aircraft coming in.
We we say investment, financial investment, most of that money does come from the FAA. However, it's a it's a kind of get in line process, you know, we can't fund everything all the time. There's only so much per year we can use. So it really starts just pushing other projects down the line when we start to do things like that, too. So that's another consideration to to think about. But as it stands, we feel like this type of development that's on the screen there is is very viable, given the existing runway conditions that we have today.
Does, so I'm not sure who, does this impact, so we just passed a resolution concerning an inland port authority. And one of their issues is using planes for cargo rather than trucks. I don't know if that's in the future, but does that limit that? Probably does because of weight?
Not necessarily. I think the comment was made during that presentation that that may not be such a significant thing at Spanish Fork. I would argue that there is a possibility for that, particularly with things like FedEx and UPS. They use a lot of contract aircraft owners to fly packages all over the place, and they'll use aircraft that definitely fit within the envelope that we that we use here. The picture they had on the screen showed a, you know, a large seven fifty-seven type jet, which is valid, but not here. Some of the like Cessna caravans and stuff that are that are more common. In fact, Ruby used to work for a company that flew cargo out of Provo. And you could possibly see in a development like that come into Spanish Fork and and fly FedEx packages on on smaller aircraft or hop them up to Salt Lake to put them on a real airplane to go somewhere else.
So Amazon uses ten thousand drones to deliver packages.
Oh, no, no, drones are a different story.
That's just to my street, so that's the only one I'm worried about.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anything else?
No, I appreciate Christian's comment about there's an alternative. We don't need to preserve something or or limit a development on someone's personal or property rights because there's an alternative just five miles away. So it's a great point. Thank you.
We say it and the and the people down at your airport say it, that we're here because it's not Provo, so, you know, why?
Right.
Good reason to not.
Not Provo. We don't have a tower here. There is still opportunity for the the private, small, you know, aircraft aviator to come in and do what he needs to do or she needs to do. It's a great, it's a great facility. He's an amazing facility compared to to many, and the growth is unprecedented here, for sure.
Thank you. That's some great information. Appreciate your hard work on this.
So we we would just like to make sure that the council is comfortable with us moving forward with that, the plan in place, the proposed plan, or if we need to do any rework on that, particularly concerning the runway length.
I think in in the language of emotion, is that what we need, Tara, that to specify that you're comfortable, we're comfortable with the current length and not adding length to this?
Taking the extension off is really the question.
Okay, okay. There's there's your language. If you're comfortable with a motion, taking the extension off the plan.
This is the airport guy.
Okay. I would entertain that motion.
I move to approve the airport layout plan update, including the lessening the length of the runway.
Removal of the extension.
Removal of the extension.
Second.
Got that. Motion made by Councilman Cardon, seconded by Councilman Marshall, roll call vote, Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
That's approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your help. Okay, that takes us to item C of new business, expressway lane widening at US six, change order two. Guaranteed maximum price adjustment for eight hundred north widening.
Okay, we did a project a couple of years ago where right before In-N-Out Burger came, which usually brings a lot of cars and ended up doing just that in Spanish Fork, where we widened and changed the intersection of Eighth North and Eighth East. That project came in on time. We beat In-N-Out Burger by, I think, a week and a half. And we came in some seven hundred plus thousand dollars under budget. This was ground money that was provided to the city by the Mountain Land Association of Governments. And not wanting to let that money slip away, we applied to go in that same general area across Highway six and widen that that road in front of Arby's to add two additional lanes and and help that intersection operate better. As we got into that project with with this same contractor, it came to our attention that the traffic study that was done by the developers in 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 the area to the south had some some problems, and it was leading to some cut-throughs at the gas station there. And so we had our traffic engineer review the plan and make some suggestions, which involved widening out, widening out this road as well to allow for a dedicated right instead of cutting through the gas station and then having two lanes that come through, one one for the the dual lefts that are are here, and then one for the through and the right here. And our traffic engineer shows that this model's very well. And and so this is a a change order, if you will, to a project that was on this intersection, which got expanded to the intersection across the street and which now is coming back here. So long explanation, but that's why we have a lot of strange names to this project.
Change to the change.
Chris, I have a question for you. On the right-hand turn, will that be, I don't know if this is if this is me or not, but will that be a lighted right turn or will be, they'll be able to go at any time?
It will be a lighted, but you'll be able to stop at this bar right here. And then if no traffic's coming, you can go.
It's not a free ride.
Yes, it's not a free ride.
Not using the engineer.
This, this, on the other hand, is a free ride. That's why us engineers love this intersection, because it's it's really cool. It's a high T, signalized high T intersection.
It's typical.
There's a lot of neat features to this intersection.
I think engineers should be the only ones presenting to us. Planners should not. Engineers, yes.
He's not listening. Oh, he is.
There was a scowl over there.
I think it is important to make one statement here, not snarky statement, but a real statement. This is what happens when you have a grid system that gets overlaid with later with a diagonal highway, right? And so you're doing your best to make make something work that really wasn't ever created to work. Diagonals and squares just end up having wonky intersections here and there.
Takes engineers a couple of times to figure it out, is what you're saying.
I knew that was coming for sure. This is the third time.
This is not a snarky comment. This is, sorry, this is not a snarky comment that I make. This is serious. That that we're dealing with something that that came, you know, fifty years after the community was set and this part of the town and a highway came, so this it is complex for sure, and and I'm sure some people don't like it, but we're trying to make it better and and this should this should do.
You definitely see the problem, right? It's when you're at that intersection, tons of people are cutting through that gas station and causing problems there, so this should help.
Correct.
And I think we're going to get, we're going to get beat up again for doing it the third time or however many times it is. But it's it's a function of growing into something. I think that's right. It's it's a very, very tricky place to to solve the problem, which is everything's just way too close. So you you do something, you grow a little bit more, you do something, do a company, you grow a little more. Here's where we're at. Hopefully, it won't be a fourth time. There's no room left.
I don't know what else you could do here.
Shane, you you may know.
Buy something.
What would the cost for an overpass be right there? Just ballpark.
Because of what's there, you're buying at least one business, if not two. So you're probably twenty, ten million in right-of-way costs, and you're probably another forty-five to fifty in it. So you're sixteen million bucks.
And and it's coming. We we tried to work with MAG to come up with any other plan, and and they say eventually it will have to be a freeway type.
But that's up to them to decide that. We we don't control that.
It's probably a long time.
It's a long time coming.
Well, it's, that's when I retire, by then.
When do people see construction and when do they see it done?
So we we want to start on this immediately, so and and have it done this month.
It is Kenny Singh, right?
Yeah, they're great. They're great.
They're already across the street.
Okay, any more questions for Chris or anyone on this one? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve each seat.
I move to approve the expressway lane widening at US six, change order two, guaranteed maximum price adjustment for eight hundred north widening.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilman Cardon, a roll call vote, Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Item C is approved, takes us to D, water reclamation facility contingency request, five.
Okay, for those of you who don't know what a water reclamation facility is, it's a sewer plant. So I guess they're dawn of the name of these things nowadays. But that being said, this normally in our process, doesn't come to city council, but it was it was significant enough money I I I wanted to bring it here. It's drawing on funds which are called contractor contingency funds, which we have rolled into a CMGC contract where where there's a lot of unknowns coming. And at the end, if these funds are not spent, half of it goes to the city and half goes to the contractor. There's a there's a lot of contingency in a project of this magnitude. And so the contractor is really on the hook to to watch how construction occurs, limit change orders and and those type of things. And and so this one is a situation where the membranes that we are using in in the filters that we'll use at at the treatment plant had some significant cost increases over the last year and a half to two years on on some of the materials that they use in the membranes. Unfortunately, for for the manufacturer, the same materials that are used in these membranes are also used in electric vehicle battery manufacturing, which has really skyrocketed and 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 in 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 use. And and so that and a number of other items that go into the manufacturing of these cartridges has caused these membranes to increase quite a bit. And so this reflects that cost. It's about a million dollars to. And so this reflects that cost, it's about a million dollars to purchase all of these membranes. So I I want to bring that to you, we we had a lot of discussion, we've probably been discussing this one for four and a half months now. Going through every single detail of the cost, verifying things. The contractor, Alder Construction, looked at it very closely because this is their funds as well. And so at the end, the the president of Alder and I sat down and with our teams. We we determined that this was actually a very fair request. There's there's no markup, it's just pass through costs and I think I think this is the best we can expect, but it was a lot of money. I went from kinda a little upset to, okay, I think everyone's working together to just make this work. And I feel good about it, I'd recommend approval of it too.
Thank you, Chris, any questions about this one for Chris?
Just brought procedural, procedural is. You said you brought this to us because it's a lot of money, is there a limit that you have to bring it to us or is this just?
In in the new procurement policy that we're writing up, we would normally bring this in.
This is large enough, okay. I don't have a problem with the request at all.
Any other questions? I would entertain a motion for item eight, D, water reclamation facility contingency request.
I move to approve the water reclamation facility contingency request five.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall, seconded by Councilman Argyle, a roll call vote, Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilwoman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle. Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
And Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Item eight D is approved, takes us to item eight E, recreation center CMGC notice of award.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is more of a formality, not an actual, we don't have the contract and for you to full on approve tonight. But this is a notice of award, we wanted to to be transparent at this moment. In this setting, sharing this information publicly as well as informally announcing the the award. After staff and members of the committee reviewed the applications from the different candidates, applicants that applied to be the contractor, construction management and general contractor for the recreation center construction project. The committee selected Westland Construction. That is a company that we have used for several projects and in fact, they built the building that we're standing in right now. I imagine that there may be some who wonder, why is the city choosing this contractor versus others? And and maybe by way of announce, uh, yeah, announcing, by way of discussing the the reasons for choosing them. One, after researching their references and and understanding their capabilities, there was confidence that they could do it. But most specifically, as we looked at the price, their price was significantly less than others. That's a great thing. Sometimes in the bidding processes, as as you look at a bidder, people underbid and sometimes they underbid because they misunderstand maybe what the project is, they get it wrong. If you go with them, you find out later they got it wrong, you have some problems, so you want to investigate that. Sometimes they underbid thinking that maybe they can change order of the process later and get their money back on the back end. We reviewed each of those and have confidence that none of those are the case here, they simply want this project. And we reviewed a number of different questions and concerns, possible concerns, I should say, with the owners of the company and and had a wonderful meeting, Mayor, you were part of that discussion. And by choosing them, the project will save over two million dollars over the next bidder. That's a significant dollar amount. And with having confidence that they can do it and saving over two million dollars, that's money that we can either save or put into the project, depending on how the costs for the project come back. That may be something that we can enhance or simply allows us to to keep it under a certain budget target that we've already set. So with that, we want to announce here and although we don't have the contract for you to sign, this isn't something that you specifically have to do, we we certainly welcome a motion, some kind of an acknowledgement of approving this notice of award.
Thank you, Seth, any questions for Seth on this one?
Maybe we'll direct them at you too, as a member of that committee.
It's a lot of money, big difference as far as this, so I mean, makes sense.
How many people applied for this? Four?
I think we had three in the end, we had five, I want to say five that expressed interest, three that submitted actual bids. And and very good names, household names in the construction world. Certainly names that have participated in construction projects of this size and of this type. And quite candidly, there was one construction company that we assumed probably would be the one to get it because of their history and and other projects that they've done. But they were significantly out of out of the price range.
Thank you.
Okay, there's no.
Do you want a motion?
We would love one. Yep, just a just something that that you've given, if you will, your stamp of approval.
Okay. Want to give it a shot?
I'd entertain a motion for item eight E.
All right, I move that we. Okay, accept award?
Which one?
Come on, stop.
Accept the notice of reward, noticeable word?
I shouldn't even start it. I move that we accept the proposal from Westland Construction for our rec center.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Marshall, seconded by Councilman Argyle for item eight E, so roll call vote, Councilman Argyle. What the hell if I was a higher voice? Maybe, you gotta change your selection, yes. Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Councilman Carden?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Okay. Item eight E is approved, get it built yesterday, right? That's the charge with that?
Yeah, I I think maybe one thing to say is each of the candidates that we interviewed said they could have this constructed in twenty twenty-five and with an eye toward opening spring, right, late spring, early summer, traditional swimming season. Which was a welcome surprise to those on the committee that reviewed it because there was some fear maybe with timing and delays it would push to twenty twenty-six. And so every bidder that put in said they could get this done by by the swimming season twenty twenty-six or twenty twenty-five. So that that's something we're gonna push for, Dale's working hard with the architects, keeping them moving, so that's certainly on our radar.
I had the opportunity to to review all three of these and I don't think we could have gone wrong. All three of them are more than capable of delivering it on time and in a high quality product. But it's you just can't walk away from almost three million dollars.
Yep. Okay, takes us to item eight F, cemetery landscaping line trimming. Mr. Bill Bushman, sorry, we could have looked at this and called you up a little bit sooner, I apologize.
That's not a problem, I'm happy to be here, I've learned a lot tonight, it's been good to be here. We opened an RFP for the cemetery line trimming contract for a twenty-four week contract, which would require all the line trimming for landscaping around the stone, headstones, top back of curb, around the trees, any of the property that require line trimming. We received five, excuse me, four proposals that range anywhere on the top end for two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars for the twenty-four week contract. We're requiring them to do this on Fridays, so things will look pristine for the weekends when we get most of our visitors. And ranging it all the way down to forty-seven thousand dollars and some change. So we are recommending we have you approve the contract with Rubicon Contractors for the twenty-eight week, twenty-four week contract for forty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty dollars.
Thank you, Bill, any questions for Bushman on this one? Okay. Now I entertain a motion to approve item eight F.
I move to approve the cemetery landscape line trimming agreement.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilman Carden, roll call vote, Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
That is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Up there. It's looking beautiful already.
Thank you.
Okay, it takes us to item eight G, resolution personnel policy update, Mr. Tyler Jacobson.
All right, from time to time, there are updates that we need to make to our personnel policy manual. We made some probably four months ago, four to six months ago. And most of the changes that we're proposing are minor updates, maybe a length that needs to be added or a clarification on which department or division an employee needs to visit with regarding sick leave. We at we did add a new section for certification assistance. And the reason for this is because we have employees that are actually required to have certain certifications by law in order to perform their their jobs. From department to department, what we were paying for as far as the testing differed. So this is an an attempt to really create a uniform policy for all of our departments to follow. So now, for example, if we had one of our wastewater operators that needed a certification and needed a test for that, we would pay for the first test and the passing test. So if they had to take the test several times in between, then they would be required on their own to to pay for those those tests. Does that make sense? So that was, that's really the only new policy that we have, the others are just adjustments to current policies. There is one that is important to note, so our on-call pay. Currently, if you're on call for the city, then you receive a base compensation rate that's equal to seven hours of your overtime rate or three hundred and seventy-five dollars per week, whichever is greater. Sorry, two hundred and seventy-five right now. What we're proposing, it's it's been a very long time since we've updated that number and as a result, there, I don't know that of, there may be one or two employees that are just starting out in their positions that they would be actually advantageous to get the two hundred and seventy-five dollars versus their overtime rate. So this is something that would affect the budget if you did approve it. And I take it back, there is actually one other, there is one other section that we are adding that is a new section, monitoring city property. So what we're recommending here is that the city be allowed to put GPS devices on city vehicles as needed. And the purpose for this is is to really, there's times when we need to know where our employees are geographically located for safety. And then also, to be honest with you, other times where employees may be using city equipment for personal use, which in the in the municipal world is not, is not appropriate. The taxpayers are paying for for these vehicles and we want to make sure that they're used for the right purposes.
Wastewater vehicles.
So we've, the way we've worded it here, it could be equipment or vehicles, so either one. So if you've got a lawnmower, riding lawnmower, Chad, if you've got somebody from the city coming over weekly to mow your lawn, we'll we'll be able to figure it out now.
Who's gonna monitor it?
Yeah, their supervisors will, as needed, and this isn't something that we plan to do with every vehicle, it's more of on an as-needed basis. It's, like I mentioned before, to try to protect city assets and make sure they're used appropriately and and also keep our employees safe.
I'm assuming there isn't really an ongoing monitoring, if there's an issue, you look up the GPS and see where someone was.
You know that, yeah, exactly.
And even maybe less so, we, as we've done this once or twice, we've found that there was a lacking in our policy that gave us, gave our employees notice that we could do this, gave us the ability to do this. So this this just gives us the ability to do something that that we need to do, we really only do it on an as-needed basis, we don't monitor any. We don't have trackers on.
It's not gonna be a monitor out there that you can watch.
Yeah, we don't have trackers on every vehicle, we probably don't have trackers on more than one or two, you know, at at a time, if you will, but more situational or circumstantial, if it needed to be, we could do it more often.
So so you're not, we're not gonna do the fleet, you're gonna do.
Correct.
Mike's truck.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, we already have Mike's truck.
Okay. Okay, I went through this process and you're you're telling me like you're gonna pick out vehicles, I'd have a little problem with that. I mean, if you're gonna have Brian say, hey, I want all my vehicles. But him to call you and say, hey, I got two vehicles, I want you to GPS, I I'm not, I don't know that I'm for that. So you're looking for a problem. That's the supervisor's job then to look at that and find that, I don't, I I I get, either I'm not understanding, you're saying you're just gonna limit.
So I think what I think what you're saying, Chad, is right along with what we're trying to accomplish is giving our supervisors a tool that if they have an employee who isn't, who they suspect isn't actually doing their job. Sometimes we have employees that have to operate independently. So they may have a vehicle where they're traveling from worksite to worksite and there's not a lot of oversight day to day from their supervisor, because their supervisor has other responsibilities. So this would just give them another tool to use to make it a little bit easier on them if they do have an employee that is doing some. It it wouldn't, we wouldn't do this unless there was, most likely, I should say, most likely we wouldn't use this unless there was a reason to use it. But if there's a suggestion you have in changing the language, we're happy to look at, look at that.
Coming behind you.
Can I, can I just make one addition to this? One thing that, in my department, we do have a couple already, in fact, most of our vehicles. But we have them because occasionally we will get a citizen, a resident, a concerned resident that says, hey, one of your vehicles was whipping through my neighborhood at forty-five miles an hour. And this gives us that tool in addition to go back and and keep ourselves protected and say, no, we've got a GPS track for where that truck was, we know that that's not the case because that GPS track also shows speeds that the vehicles travel. So just, I just wanted to put that out there.
Thanks, Brian. Yeah, and there are actually are other departments where we'll have them travel quite a ways up, like our water department, they have to travel quite a ways to go and check different infrastructure i- if it's outside of the city. So if we were able to have a tracker on their vehicles, we would know where where they were at if they didn't, you know, didn't show up for a while.
Yeah.
So.
And I and I understand protecting assets and that kind of stuff, I I just don't, I still don't know, I'm a little uncomfortable with supervisor saying, hey, put it on this vehicle because he's having a concern, if you have a concern, go follow him.
I I don't know that I agree with that, I don't think it needs to go to that far, I think, I think this this is a tool that can be used and is is being used currently, it sounds like for for good reason, I think as a supervisor, you know, the city should have that, have that ability to do so. I I don't look at it as, you know, this is Big Brother, this is, you you work, you're an employee of the city and your supervisor should be able to to know whether you're doing your job or not, in my opinion.
I don't have a problem with the policy as written because it says we can do this or you can do this. I do have a bit of a problem for how you implement it, to Chad's point. I think the case that you just made is a very good, sound case, I think it protects the employee as often as it hurts the employee or more so. There are many times when a government vehicle's been accused of doing something and this is a good way of saying, no, it wasn't us. But you can only do that if you if you apply it broadly. So I think from the the way the policy is written, I'm okay, because it allows you to apply it somehow. But to Chad's point, I would rather see a broader application than a, I don't trust you today, I'm gonna put a GPS tracker on your truck today.
Because in some ways that might hold us HR liable because of selective.
I don't think so, the city owns these vehicles, it can monitor them as needed. I think we have the right to do that already. This, I think, more than anything, lets the employees know that the city may do that, you know, it kind of gives them notice that. And hopefully deters some bad actions.
You know, it kind of gives them notice and hopefully deters some bad actions.
I guess the next question is, do those employees know that their vehicle has the GPS activated?
Sometimes they don't. And, and maybe let me put this in a context that's, I think, equal to what Councilman Argyle was suggesting. And that is, this is the supervisor's job to go follow them. This is the twenty-twenty-three version of that, right? In, in a year bef, in, in a time before, I might get in my vehicle and frankly, one of our directors, once upon a time, would take his spouse's vehicle, his wife's vehicle, because nobody knew that vehicle. And he would follow employees around for a couple of days and, and begin to identify a pattern that was problematic and, and work through some disciplinary issues. That is really a less effective way based on technology and opportunities that we have today. And so instead, we can deploy this technology and accomplish the same thing. In the last five years, I think we've done this twice, maybe once, in terms of the disciplinary side of things. And it's not something that, that a sergeant's gonna go do alone without talking with Matt or that one of the assistant water direct division managers is going to do without working through, through Chris. It's something that is specifically identified and worked through. But candidly, this is the tool that we want to use rather than saying Chris or whoever in, in his circumstance is going to spend a day or two or three tailing somebody in some clandestine way. I, I actually spent a couple of hours one year dealing with, or one, one week dealing with an issue and I was, I was at three or four locations around town. And one day I walked into one location and said, do you mind if I just stand here in this window for an hour and watch something? And the gentleman that was owning, that owned that business, he said, oh, I know what you're watching. And I sat there and I took notes of who was there, and this was about fifteen years ago. But this really is the way that I think we accomplish what you're suggesting that we do with a little bit more efficiency versus what I just described.
Yeah, I mean, and we're not trying to catch people doing things wrong. I think right along with what Seth was sharing, one thing that I like about this, it's not, if we ever had to have a situation where we had to do mediation, it would be very challenging to have a single supervisor saying that my employee was using a vehicle for personal use because then it just becomes a he said, she said. So the supervisor says, well, you were doing this, the employee says, no, I wasn't doing this. With GPS data, we actually have facts that we can show them. Here is what the GPS data shows, this is where you were at for this period of time, this is how many times it happened, you know? And so it's rather than just the supervisor's word of, I was following this person around and they were doing this for personal business, it's another, it's another witness that makes it a little bit easier to, to prove that. We can certainly look at changing it in some way, Chad. What suggestions do you have, though? Is there a, what would help you be more comfortable with, with this?
Well, I, I, I agree with what Seth is saying. It is technology. But I've also watched technology not be in its greatest form and gone down roads where we've accused only to prove that it was wrong. And you're telling me right now you're using it solely for that purpose as a tool?
It, it's really not anything new, though. You think about employment at a private company, they issue a, a work laptop, for example. That employer has every right to monitor everything that's being done on that laptop.
Absolutely.
And I really don't look at it as being much different than that type of a situation.
But every laptop usually is deployed with that capability to do that. Technology allows you to do that. The computers that we use would allow us to do that. But GPS is, I've watched too many errors and too many mistakes made because of, we relied on that technology to do that. Now we've came, come a long ways, I agree with that. I'm, I'm okay with it. I just want, I just have cautions with it when you're just using it for one purpose. I, I get the fleet. I, I had the fleet, I had the ability to do that, I had the ability to watch that, I had the ability to see where they were at, what they did all day long. But every single one of my vehicles had that on them and every single employee knew that they had that on that truck. There wasn't no secret to anybody. And so when you did that, and went into a conference, it was my word against, yeah, but I had this to show that you did this.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just, just my cautions, I guess, more than anything.
Okay.
I think that's a valid point, good, good questions, good discussions. I hope what we're, what we're arriving to is that this isn't a policy in search of a problem, that it's a policy to, in reaction to, to maybe instances where we, where we wish we would have had the capability.
Yeah. Yeah. Any other questions about?
Any other questions or discussion on this item?
No.
If not, I'd entertain a motion for item eight G.
I move to approve the resolution, personnel policy update.
Second.
So motion made by Councilman Marshall, seconded by, which one over there?
It's me.
Councilman Carden, sorry. It's the acoustics. Roll call vote, Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Councilman Carden?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Item eight G is approved, takes us to item eight H, fiscal year twenty-twenty-four tentative budget.
Can I move, we move this to another topic?
Do you entertain a motion?
I think it's, I don't even think we have the legal ability to move it to a different time.
Huh?
I think this one's prescribed by state law today.
Could do that?
Yeah. It's nine forty-four. Maybe we wanna do a stand-up, explore the back spaces behind your chair for a moment in this new beautiful building?
Let's just get through it.
All right, you need a minute?
Oh, I'm good.
You're good?
I could use like a new sandwich or something.
I, I think we need to walk in here somewhere.
Yeah, I think you're right, we'll work on that.
Okay.
We'll work on that. Really is a beautiful building and I hope, I hope you're, we're enjoying it. Of course, there are a couple of quirks here and there and we've got a couple of people taking notes on, on some gremlins and, and we'll, we'll keep working on and certainly take feedback from you as well as, as we experienced today. Did the temperature, is the temperature getting better?
Oh, yes, thank you.
It was a little chilly, yeah. Well, today, we have the tentative budget. The state law prescribes that we must adopt, we must approve a tentative budget that is our operating budget if, for some reason, the full budget is not adopted. Tonight, we will review some of the highlights of the tentative budget. You were distributed earlier today, PDF version of the tentative budget. It was uploaded this afternoon to this agenda. It is not the final budget and, and as Jordan will explain in greater detail, this month is, is essentially the council's month to, to review and, and make adjustments to the tentative budget. We will have a public hearing, first meeting in June, and then we would anticipate adoption of the full budget, the second meeting in June. This budget is one that has been worked on at length by every division and every department in the city since the beginning of February, specifically on the budget itself and, and other ways for the last six months or so. Budget document that you have with you is, is a lot of work from many, but I want to specifically note the work of Nate Reed and Jordan Hales as they worked on a lot of the budget product. We'll spend some time reviewing the budget letter in, in presentation format. And then I will work with you to set up some times during the next couple of weeks where we can get together and review any questions that you have, discuss any concerns or thoughts. There are some things today that we will discuss that, that we want some feedback from you on in some format that will be easy for you to understand, not in some hocus pocus spreadsheet that is hard for you guys to work through. We'll figure it out, we'll get there.
Hocus pocus.
Hocus pocus.
Remember his hocus pocus spreadsheet last time?
It was not supposed to be that hard. I feel like it was only because I was remote, but I don't know.
Nope, that wasn't the reason.
I want you to know that Brian spent, what would you say, Brian, two hours? Working on making it better, he did a better job. We'll use it, we'll use it later. So anyways, we're gonna start off with Jordan, I'll come up in just a moment after Jordan as, and then we'll go back to Jordan and I think Chris will come up to a little tag teaming of us three. If you have any questions throughout, stop us, ask those questions. Most of the directors are still here, if you have any questions about things that, that we discussed that pertain to their departments, they can answer them as well. And, yeah, let's get rolling. I think we have about forty-five minutes.
Tell me we're gonna be able to sign up for the, what are you, the ARC thing?
Oh, yeah, Youth Arts Festival.
Yeah.
Two hours now.
I thought that was a directive.
He took that as instruction.
I'm hoping it's less than forty-five minutes. I may cover some tables, yeah. So this shows each of the fiscal years and total actuals spent in each of these fiscal years. A hundred and five million, a hundred and fifteen million, a hundred and forty-four million. Budget for this current year, two hundred and twelve million, actually going down tentatively, nine million dollars. There's a lot to these numbers and you can see that when you're building projects like a sewer plant that costs over a hundred million dollars, those numbers can grow very quickly. So I try not to read anything much into these summary numbers, you really need to dig down into the details. This is pretty tight, but it does have a comprehensive look at the general fund revenues. One thing we've noticed is that the last three months, sales tax numbers that we've received have not been good. So in April, we would have received February's sales, March, we would have received January's, and then in February, we would have received December's. And those three months have not been performing like we thought we would. We were on track to meet this budget number of fourteen point two five million. And right now, we'll probably, I'd say best guess, thirteen point six million. So big trend down in the past few months. So we're looking at budgeting conservatively, instead of budgeting, you know, fifteen and a half million, which would be pretty normal growth, we're looking at thirteen nine five. So that's led, led us to cut some things and to make some adjustments.
You sure it's thirteen nine five and not fourteen?
It says thirteen nine five, right? But it is a, it's a guess, right? Big number here, grants going from five point two million down to two hundred thousand. And then corresponding the, the transfer to, from the general fund to capital project fund also go down, six million. Last year, we had ARPA funds, those are the federal funds that were allocated, granted to us. And that was about five point eight, five point nine million. So that got transferred into a capital project fund. We don't have that coming in next fiscal year. So you see that big decrease in grants coming in and a big decrease in that transfer to the capital project funds. One thing that is good to report is interest earnings are up. So you can see we're earning a hundred thousand a year. Now we're looking to hit maybe eight hundred thousand a year. And that's zero basically to five percent, you get ten times the interest. Any questions on this overview?
So, Jordan, the property tax, you're only predicting a two hundred thousand increase?
Yeah, and that would be increased strictly due to new development areas that aren't developed, that get developed.
Right. I'll save one question for him.
Okay, he's gonna cover that as well, so. There we go. Here's the general fund expenditures by division. The two I want to highlight are fire going up half a million and then fairgrounds going down almost a million. There's been quite a bit of capital projects going on at the fairgrounds and some of that will continue, but a lot of it is done within some land was purchased as well. And then in fire, there's some new positions happening there as well. But any questions about this table?
That fire addition to those paramedics going forward every year?
The paramedics were in the, actually the ambulance division, not in the fire division.
Oh, that's right, hello.
And they're becoming more of a unit. That's something that we may consider combining those two divisions into one in the future. They're both under Chief Eddie Hales.
Fire and EMS.
Yeah. All right, here's our snapshot of our enterprise funds expenses. The one that's interesting is the wastewater treatment plant going from three million to forty-four million this year, forty-five million next year. And that's what happens when you, like I said, when you build a sewer plant that costs over a hundred million dollars. Electric, they probably have, I wanna say maybe like ten million in capital projects, but a lot of that is just operations. Yeah, maybe it's fifteen million. And you get the scale of how big some of these are in relation to others, right? So the gun club is a very small operation, similar with the airport. Any questions on that? Okay, I'll turn over to Seth.
Each of these positions that you see are proposed new positions in this budget. First is the three full-time battalion chief positions in the fire department. Chief Hales has requested those to help him create and develop greater leadership and management of the daily operations of both the fire EMS crews. He would title these positions battalion chiefs. In a twenty-four hour operation, one position is three. And so we are, we're proposing three, but it just gives us one battalion chief that would be on twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. The, this position would be responsible for the daily operations of, of the ambulance as they roll out to different calls, they would take command of the scene if need be. They would also be the, the incident commander, usually in, in some kind of a fire incident as it happens. They would need to be a certified firefighter and, and have either paramedic or EMS certifications. Parks presently has seven lead workers that are under the direction of one park supervisor. With the addition of electric park and other properties as they get developed, we need to add an eighth lead worker. And in order for that to function well, having eight lead workers underneath one supervisor is really difficult. That means that the supervisor is hopping from site to site, project to project and team to team throughout the weekend, really has no ability to assist their crews that they supervise, those lead workers and their crews that they supervise. Optimal management somewhere, is somewhere around five, depending on, on geography and, and size of team and scope. So we've always planned that when we got to a certain level, seven, that would be our max. When we got to eight, we would need another parks supervisor that would, we could then split the parks into two work groups and have four lead workers that report to one supervisor. This budget proposes a new lead worker that would push us to eight. Therefore, it also proposes another supervisor that would push us to have two supervisors each managing four lead workers and their crews and their properties. This budget proposes to convert some seasonal hours as well as a half Blue Staker position that we've had, you recall from previous discussions, a Blue Staker was combined with somebody in our motor pool. And we've made some adjustments to the motor pool already in previous meetings. And this would just complete the conversion of, of that half position into a full Blue Staker position. And even though we aren't seeing the same kind of development as we have in the past, our Blue Staking continues to be very high in the demands for marking those utilities. And this is one area that we take significant effort in, is you may call in to build a fence, dig here or dig there. It's very important that we mark those utilities to prevent any, any kind of incidents. So that is a position that there are funds for in some way. So this is not a full new position, but there is some converting funds there. And finally, in the water department, a cross connection control coordinator. We debated very heavily, is there a way to shorten the name? And the water department wouldn't give. It's gotta be cross connection control coordinator. I said, could we just call it the three C? They're like, well, there are four Cs. I have four Cs, I'm trying to, I'm still trying to cut out one, just can we shorten it some way? This is in response to some state law changes that require us to monitor cross connections and eventually require us to report issues with those cross connections. I believe we've spoken about each of these positions in previous meetings, including our work session in, in late January. Any questions on these positions? All right, general fund revenue projections, sales tax. All right, uh, general fund revenue projections, sales tax. Uh, sales tax is inherently volatile, and we've spent a lot of time in work sessions and other discussions talking about, uh, sales tax. Uncertainty in the economy is leading us to budget conservatively in our sales tax, and it, interestingly, uh, sorry, that's the next point. We do save what we call the top twenty percent or twenty percent of our sales tax to go towards one-time projects, so that if there is a downturn, we can, uh, shift from those one-time projects and put those towards operations should we need to. And, uh, this budget, uh, it enables us to do that. We have, um, yeah, we have adjusted our revenue projections for this current fiscal year in our sales tax. We were on track to be about, uh, to receive, receive sale tax, sales tax of fourteen point two million, maybe fourteen point three. And current projections have us somewhere around thirteen point eight. The last few months of sales tax receipts have been down from the average of nine percent increase to a negative three decrease. So that's not going from nine to six, that's going from nine to negative three, right, a fourteen percent swing in our sales tax revenues. Jordan has been dissecting that with his team and, and isolated that to a lot of, uh, revenues from two main sources, car dealers and building supply companies. Uh, account for the majority of those decreases. Uh, most of the other, other categories continue to be at that ten, even slightly higher, but, uh, those two sources are significantly down, contributing to a decrease in, in our revenue. So in a typical year, if we were to receive, say, fourteen point two million dollars, I, we would be budgeting fifteen, uh, maybe fifteen point two, adding a new store target this next year, we would bump that up even more. But we're going, I think we're at thirteen point eight. So it's a significant down, uh, in our sales tax. I hope I'm wrong, we hope we're wrong, but at this moment, we think it's, will you, will you?
Can you shut that off?
Will you get that?
Can you come and get the donuts that's playing over here?
Cut him, cut him some slack, he's gotta be up at three thirty, check the water.
As long as he brings donuts, I don't care what time it is.
All right, let me start over. I'm just kidding. Sales tax is down. Development revenue, there's been a downturn in the number of residential permits. We're estimating still, uh, well, we had estimated about one point eight million dollars in, in billing permit and associated revenue. This budget proposes, I think, one point four million. And, uh, we think that's a conservative number. But it, it could go up, it, it might go down, but we think it's a conservative and, and correct number. Jordan already talked about interest earnings. Property taxes, uh, this is our best source for, uh, stable revenue. This budget does not propose a property tax increase. And so what we would expect to see this year is we get our truth and taxation rate from the county and the state is that, uh, our property values will go up, and therefore it will push our property tax rate down. We don't know what those numbers are at this moment, we'll get that in, uh, sometime around June fifteen, June twenty. And then, uh, there will be some growth that comes from, say, this farm field that's turned into a warehouse industrial project, or this vacant land that's turned into a, a store, or whatever, uh, development changes come that we call that new growth. And that's what we budgeted in terms of new revenue in the property tax.
So
Yeah.
Commercial development has skyrocketed. No?
Not necessarily from one year to the next, certainly over the last ten years.
This year.
Are you talking industrial or commercial?
Yeah.
Okay.
Industrial, probably, because of the buildings.
For sure. Yeah.
And that's why I asked him, is he only predicting a couple of hundred thousand when we have fifteen brand-new buildings that would have been on that property tax issue, and I don't know, you, you, you kept saying about now was when you was gonna see that.
June twentieth is about when it's due.
Is when we'll actually know that.
It's a really, it's really not all that helpful for the tentative budget process.
Yeah, right, okay.
It could go up, but remember, our rate is really low in terms of, of that overall property value. I wanna say it's one percent?
Got a farm ground that's turned into a half a million dollar, half a million square foot dummy? Should double, we should get two dollars, right?
So if we're wrong, we'll increase that when we get that, by the time we do our
So Jim, you don't see that until Jim?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, and we don't have great insight into what they're doing until they publish those screens.
And then you can see.
Uh-huh, and then we can start to see that.
I thought, I thought you did that, indicated earlier, April or for some reason.
Oh, no, that would be fantastic. We would love that. Yeah. So when we get that information, probably not by our public hearing, certainly by, um, I shouldn't say certainly, but I'm pretty confident by the time we have our, depends on where on the calendar that fits, we should have that number. And, and if we can bump it up, we will.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and especially we'll bump it up, because if we don't, then they'll lower our property tax for that new growth to match what we budgeted, so we wanna, wanna make sure that we capture that new growth so they're on the same level as, as all other properties. I think that's all I'm done. Well, I have, Chris?
This year, quite, quite a few rate increases all kinda hit at the same time. So Seth and I are talking about this, and we kinda wanna show you probably the most important ones, if you want to defer on some, but, I, I kinda wanna explain how that happened. The total comes to seven dollars and forty-four cents a month for the average home. If you add them all together, that still puts us about twenty dollars a month less than the average of the communities that we compare to. So our overall rates after the seven forty-four increase is still pretty low, but, uh, normally, we don't raise this many rates at the same time. So I just wanna explain it to you and kinda tell you our priorities that Seth and I discussed. But, um, on the water, this is, was mostly just a correction, right? There, there's a, there's a lot going on in water and, and, and costs have gone up to build the tank and some of the other things, but, the main reason for this correction is our drinking water base rate was lower than our pressurized irrigation base rate. And so a lot of the dialogue we have with people as well use, use the pressurized irrigation water on your yards, 'cause it's cheaper, and, and sometimes we get some pushback, well, what do you mean? Ten dollars here and it's eleven thirty-five here, and, and, and having to explain that over and over again, it just didn't, it made us realize there's a lot of confusion out there when people look at those two base rates. Uh, the usage rate is significantly different, so per gallon, you pay a lot less for pressurized irrigation. But the, both the rates are listed sidewayside, and you look at the water rate, drinking water rate, and it looks lower than the pressurized irrigation. So to clarify, to clean that up, we set the base rates just the same and then have the usage rates. So that's what that one is. It, it certainly helps with the increased cost of concrete, building these tanks and water lines and, and things like that, but, all that was is changing the two base rates so they match up. So the water went from ten dollars to eleven fifty, and the pressurized irrigation went from eleven thirty-four to eleven fifty, uh, for a total of a dollar sixty-six increase in water. This is the first water rate increase since two thousand and two, and it follows five water rate decreases since two thousand and two. So over the years, we had that big pressurized irrigation bond that had this many people paying on the bond. And then our city grew really by a lot of people that, yeah, this many people paying that same bond amount. And so because of that, we were able to lower rates five different times, and, um, that worked out really well. We haven't lowered rates or increased rates for a little while, but now, uh, twenty years later, this is, this is really the first time that a rate increase has been proposed. So I, I, I don't think there's very many cities out there that haven't raised water rates in twenty years, so. In fact, we've done the opposite, we've decreased them five different times.
I like everything you've said, except for how you led this conversation with, because it's confusing to the, to the property owner that PI is more in the base rate than colonary want to raise it. That doesn't make sense to me. The fact that things cost more makes sense, the fact that we haven't had an increase in twenty years makes sense. But just to make it simple and not have to have the conversation does not make sense to raise the rate.
It's a, a great question, I should correct that. So we chose that mechanism, a rate increase was needed. We chose the base rates to fix that for the rate, instead of the usage rate.
That is a very good clarification, thank you very much for that.
And, and the rate was needed because concrete is gone way up, you, and you know that.
I got you, I got you now. Thank you for that clarification, that's helpful.
No, I think that was a needed clarification. Uh, average monthly sewer, and, and this is interesting, last year, we predicted that we would need uh, four dollars and sixty-six cents more a month this year. Uh, that's gone down by about a dollar twenty because of some grants that a lot of our elected officials, both, uh, local and statewide, have really gone to bat for us, and, and we've gotten some good grants. And so, uh, that's actually, seems like the highest rate increase, but it's a lot less than what we thought it would be this year. Then the power base rate, uh, it's kind of a funny story here. We, when we sat down with all the net metering folks, okay, so these are people who are putting, solar panels on their roof, and they're producing power sometimes more than what they're using. And so, uh, sometimes they're getting a credit on their bills, sometimes, you know, they're, they're using more than their solar pa- panels are making, maybe at night, and so there's power coming from the city into the, into their house, and, and we're netting out that power. Our consultants that tell us what our power rate should be, uh, pointed out that that's not sustainable. These net metering customers will probably, uh, quite often not pay for any of the cost to maintain the power boxes that are providing them power. And so, uh, what they did is they separated the cost of the maintenance of, of the electric infrastructure that a net metering customer needed, and, and they said, that's twenty-three dollars a month. Well, at that time, we were charging three dollars and fifty cents a month for base rate. So they said, if you just change the base rate to twenty-three dollars a month, then you can have as many solar panels on roofs as, as you want, and, and the, the real cost to, to support them will be paid, and, and you won't have to have a subsidy going on there. And so the council wanted at that time to move to that rate, but to phase it over six years, 'cause a lot of people had purchased solar panels with ROI that they're dependent on, and so a phased approach. And we worked this out with the Solar Panel Association of Utah, and, 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 and it really ended up being a really good, uh, uh, compromise on, on making that rate sustainable. Well, that same consultant that set our power rates and recommended twenty-three a month was, uh, hired by UNPA to review all of our power rates again. And they looked at it and said, well, with the change, what's going on, the number of users and, and all of that, we are fine to stop at twenty dollars and forty-nine cents instead of twenty-three, but looking into the future, just plan on raising it one dollar every year, and that should keep up with projected, uh, inflationary costs, and then that would be reviewed periodically. And so that was his recommendation, instead of raising it to twenty-three. And so his recommendation is go to twenty-one fifty for the base rate, uh, and, and do not lower the usage rate this time. Before, we'd always lower the usage rate a little bit and raise the base rate. And so that, overall, we weren't, uh, really raising rates, we were just making a sustainable base rate. He said that really what we are at now is the usage rate is at terminal. If you lower the usage rate anymore, uh, it won't be sustainable. And so, uh, we, what we now need to do in order to get to that twenty-three is hold the usage rate and just raise a dollar a year, get to the twenty-three, and then we'll, we'll keep evaluating after that. So that report came in, uh, this last year with the recommendation that the base rate should go to twenty-one dollars and fifty cents. And then every year after that, just raise a dollar, uh, in order to keep the residents that don't have solar panels from subsidizing the cost to maintain the system for the residents that do have solar panels. And so it's really complex, these, these reports that they do and how they study it, but we're, we're pretty committed to make sure that everything's sustainable, everyone's paying their own way, and that, uh, we don't have subsidies going back and forth, 'cause I think that, that leads you into real problems with, with, uh, eventually, if you get way too many solar panels, then you're not solving it, and, and so we don't want that to happen. So that recommendation came. And then at the same time, uh, in this last month, uh, in our garbage, uh, uh, organization that we are with all the other, uh, cities that, that maintain the transfer station and the landfill, they came up with some pretty significant, uh, recycling rate increases. And then, uh, what I would call kind of a reasonable, a reasonable
Ran out, we would have been like, oh, you're on the call.
A reasonable inflationary type increase in garbage. So garbage, garbage went up just a small amount, up a small amount, and then recycling went up a large amount. And so these just reflect passing through that cost for what our district, our garbage district is charging us. And so if you add all of those up, it adds to seven forty-four. Uh, our priorities would be the water and sewer and the recycle. And then if, if you felt like this was too much to do in one year, uh, look at the power, power base rate and the garbage can rate and, and, and look to do like a catch-up next year, so. Any questions on any of that? Any discussion you'd like to have?
Questions for Chris? Thanks, Chris, for that explanation.
The next thing that Seth wanted me to talk about is bond issuances. When we were first trying to propose the water rate increase, it was a lot. It was horrific, and we boiled out all of the projects that we couldn't live without, and it still was really a large water rate increase. And, and we have really good ten-year forecasting of projects, and, and we just pushed everything we could as far out as we could. And, 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 and just the real critical projects that we needed to do in the city, let them in. And, uh, one of the things that was concerning to me, though, is we dipped down really low in our, our cash reserves initially, but then at the ten-year mark, we were really, really high. And, and so I kinda hated proposing such a large rate increase if I knew I didn't really need that money, uh, in the future. I, I couldn't project needing that money in the future, and that's with spending a lot of money on, on replacement of old lines and, and being responsible with that, uh, not just assuming that we didn't have any future projects. And so we sat down with Zion's Bank and kinda talked through what a bond would look like. And it's very interesting, as soon as you make it a set amount every year, then, then the rate increase, uh, wasn't, wasn't much at all, it was the dollar that you were seeing. So that is why we're proposing, uh, some of these bonds, because some of these big projects that we have to do, because of all the industrial at the north end of town, it's triggering a lot of expensive projects, but if you look at what it brings to the community, uh, especially with bonding, you can easily pay for those costs with revenues that come in from, from these big warehouses and, and big industries, providing them fire protection, all these things. We feel like there are a number of, of bond issuances that, that actually keep your rates uh lower. If we don't do that, then we're making some really hard decisions on uh growth-limiting projects being pushed out that would prevent us from meeting fire flows for a, a large building or, or some of those type of things. So, we feel like it will make a lot of sense to do some bonds instead of what I would call really large rate increases, if that makes sense. Any questions on that? How that works? Those will be discussions in the future, but, but we're kinda trying to plan these ten-year plans around what allows us to not increase rates, only to have them have to be decreased significantly in the future.
Chris?
Yeah.
So, just, I, I just wanna make a comment because I, um, I, I appreciate what you've done, especially with the projects that we've done and that we're doing. The fact that you say over the past few years, we've had to delay projects. I mean, I think about what sewer line we did, the sewer plant that we're doing, the relining of the water line down the canyon, the new water tank. I don't think we've delayed projects. I think we've been doing these projects hand over fist. And maybe I'm wrong. I know there's other things that we have to do. And bonding for them maybe makes the best sense. And I, I love what you do when you put these things together. Through the, the tax, so that we're not doing a rate increase. But I, I feel like we've really been doing a whole lot of water stuff over the past just even few years. And I know what, we're a city growing and everything else, but uh, I don't, I, I guess I just keep saying we're putting off projects. We shouldn't be doing that. We shouldn't be taking care of those because they usually lead in the, in bad stuff, on the things like that. But I, I guess, are we delaying projects that we should have been taking care of? I guess that's my question to the end of it, that we should have been taking care of now along, along with everything else. What we've been, the water line to improve the PI to the west town. I mean, it just seems like we've just done water, water, water.
Right. No, we, we have been doing projects when they should be doing. What I was talking about is over the next four years, there are a certain number of projects that we show are needed in order to support some of the growth that is coming. And if we don't do it at year two from now, or year one from now, or year three from now, then we're gonna have some growth limitations that we're gonna have to face. Whereas if we do a bond, we can do those projects and you don't have to spike up rates to pay for them because it, it will be paid for by the future leveled-out bond payment projects. And, and, and there is a, a uh principle here that a lot of cities and school districts uh really uh promote. And that is the people who will actually use the asset are paying for it with the bond payments. Because we're building this for future generations. They pay for it. If you don't do a bond in these instances, then you're basically charging the residents now a, a, a much larger utility rate to pay for something that actually benefits the future residents coming in. And so, uh, bonding actually kinda helps make it a little bit more fair. And they level out your rates so that they're not jumping up and going down.
And, and I agree one hundred percent with that. You know how I feel about that. There's, that's no secret there. But I also don't want my residents paying for all this new industrial that's coming in. I don't want my rates to raise so for the next fifty years to pay for that project, that they will be brand-new. And that's what the bond does.
Yeah, I have a similar feeling about that. And uh, so it took me a while to get through this. But you plug it in on the ten-year plan and you can, you can hold your rates. You, you don't and your rates really spike up quite a bit. Or you put off a project that if we sat down and told you the merits of this project, you would not wanna put it off. And so, there, there's really a balance there that, that once, once you, once you do a ten-year capital improvement plan, then bonds in many instances are, are much easier on the public than, than uh trying to just save up cash and having the fu- the current residents pay for something that really benefits the future residents.
And, and it makes me feel really good that everything you're saying, the numbers guy right there is just nodding his head.
He, he actually is trained in this and him and his predecessor have tried to tell me this for several years, but I, I hate that. So, it's, it's been hard for them to convert me to this. I think I covered everything on this. Any questions about that? Capital projects, again, we have uh the sewer treatment plant. We've received over ten million dollars in grants, uh, a lot of which we plan to use uh as we finish up the treatment plant. It's very important that we spend the bond money first and then let this sit in the bank, accrue interest, and then we can use that later. We're, our, our, we've saved up twenty-something million dollars for this sewer treatment plant. And the interest payments coming in on that are, have been wonderful. So, it's really helping in that regards. And that helped us reduce what we had to raise rates to as well. And, and, and the last thing is, we pulled the trigger on that bond early because interest rates were at one point six percent. We didn't know of the real cost of what the treatment plant would be then. We just chose a number that was safe and we took out that bond at one point six percent. If we would have waited, it would have been over four percent. And that, that foresight saved the city about twenty-eight million dollars over the life of the loan of the treatment plant. So, we, we feel like uh we're getting this treatment plant as cheaply as we possibly could. But it's also a state-of-the-art plant which will protect us from future regulation. And we won't have to rebuild every time a regulation comes out. So, we're really grateful for that. We're really grateful for how much it saved. And I think that is why our projected rates are supposed to, to stop at around fifty or less a month. Whereas, a lot of cities are looking at between eighty, ninety, or even a hundred dollars a month with their future sewer rates because of the interest rates, how they are now and, and the cost to do plants. So, trying to put a little bit of lipstick on this pig, but uh, that's what I got for you. Um, let's see.
Can we turn the heat back on?
It's freezing.
Holy crap.
We're trying to hurry you along. If we warm it up, you'll get comfortable and we'll stay here forever.
You will, Chris, because you said-
And we talked about the five million gallon tank. This is, this is one of the projects that we wanted to do. Concrete became very scarce and very expensive, so we waited and concrete never went down. So, we're just, we gotta do it, so.
A couple of comments on the bonding. When we met in our work session, mid-year work session in February, I don't remember if it's February or January now. Chris talked about all of these projects that he's been alluding to in the bond issuances for both water and streets and stormwater. As Jordan and I took that information and mulled through it in our meetings about the finances, he and I came to our own conclusion that the best thing that we could do to maintain the systems and the prices, uh, the utility rates, et cetera, was to consider some kind of a, a bond program that would allow us to do these projects without raising rates. And then, Jordan and I, while we were working on this simultaneously, uh, Chris was stewing over, "How could he do this?" And uh, in one of my meetings, my next meeting with him, if you will, I said, "Chris, have you ever considered doing these through bonds?" And he said, "I've been thinking. Is that the right way to do it? This is what I've got. Let me show you." And it was fun to see how we were, we were thinking in different rooms, but in, in the same manner. This isn't new stuff. But uh, one thing that Chris has outlined and, and maybe is causing some questions for people that'll be watching this or are here today, that these are not all growth-related projects that we're saying we're doing only because we are either inviting growth or growth is happening. And the, the former residents, as Councilman Argyle was saying, current residents have to pay for this that growth is bringing. Uh, that's not necessarily the case, but there is always an element of growth in the projects that we do, which means that there are, because we're bonding, we can use impact fees to pay a portion of these, uh, these bonds as well each year. But we, we have made decisions in the past to do things this way or that way that every decision has maybe a, a potential cost. And, and because of that, we, we didn't take this line to this place or we didn't size it that way because we made decisions and, and now we have to go back and with our master plans, adjust things and make things different here or there. So, there is some corrections that we have to do with these projects uh that will benefit the current users. There, there are some places where they don't have the water capacity that, that, that they need and they've been functioning that way for ten or fifteen years. And it's not the right way to operate the system and it creates a problem. So, some of these projects are, are not only, many of these projects are not only growth-related, but they do have growth elements in them. And then, we didn't spend a lot of time on transportation, but you've been briefed on all the different projects, trying to help our north, south corridors and different things. To do those effectively, a bond will make it so that, that we, we can accomplish them and pay for them over time and really improve our network of, of travel here in town. So, wanted to give that insight about how we, uh, all roads, all pipes led to uh what Chris was outlining today in the bond issuance. But that will move forward with Jordan taking us home.
All right. Dell's not here, so I'll, I'll cover the Recreation and Senior Center. Let's see. There we go. So, we'll, we will issue debt um in fiscal twenty-four and begin construction. Just a reminder, that debt to construct the building will be paid. The debt payment will be made from a combination of sales tax, property tax, RAP tax, parks impact fees, and possibly some other sources. You guys, in finance class, you learned about diversification. So, this is diversification in financing that payment. Property tax rate was raised last year. Um, no plan to raise it this year. Plan for that to be completed in twenty twenty-five. And then, that design there is for illustrative purposes only. It's not a final design by any means, so.
This, this is change, right? It's park, it's gonna be parking, future parking.
I see some heads nodding. Any questions about the, the rec center?
All right.
Maybe that's the part to speak conservatively to. We're just had discussions of sales tax revenues, you know, being lower than expected. But that's the conservative plan that was put in place for that funding of when those bonds are issued to still be covered and, and not threatened by, "Hey, can we do this project?"
Yeah. We, we wanna reserve that top twenty percent of sales tax um for one-time projects and not something that we rely on to, that we need to make a debt payment or to fund police staffing or whatever. Abbey Court Park Playground is due for replacement. And the last few years, we've uh got this plan in place where we replace one park playground every year. Those playgrounds have a life expectancy of fifteen to twenty years. Every year, um, our guys go and make an assessment into the playgrounds and see what status they're in. But what we're doing is we're funding these uh playground replacements with the, the RAP tax. So, we've done uh Centennial Park, Library, City Park right here. And then, I know that we're kind of in the process of the sports park. Any questions about that, that plan? All right. So, here's the full uh RAP tax fund budget. Thing I wanna point out is this million dollars that we've set aside um to go to the rec center. Right now, we don't have a debt payment for, on the rec center. So, that will just go to keep the, the amount that we need to borrow down a million dollars.
About what are you projecting?
In revenue?
For rap, from rap.
Um, and I was looking at that number and I, we probably should decrease that. That's probably a little high. When we were looking at our sales tax, we forgot that.
It's not too high.
So, that's saying, anything that's okay? It might.
For the rap, one point three.
Yeah. And you can see the, the growth on-
Yeah.
On that, uh, seven hundred forty thousand, almost a million, and then a million and a half. So, it is growing. And then, just enough, not everything that you pay sales tax on is subject to RAP tax. About eighty percent of things that you pay sales tax on is also subject to that RAP tax. Ninety-seven. I don't think it's quite ninety. Yeah.
I'm going with Jordan.
You will see, um, we're also granting some money to external third parties. Um, and then, so there's the park playground and then some other internal uh projects going on as well that's funded by the RAP tax. Any questions on the RAP tax? So, next steps, uh, the budget's presented. You have this month to review it along with the, the public. The first council meeting in June, we'll have a public hearing where the public can come and uh get up and speak and say their piece. And then, in twentieth of June, we'll approve the budget. So, that is the budget for um the main city purposes, I guess you would say. And then, we'll, we'll cover the budget for the RDA and LBA next.
So, Jordan and Seth, will you schedule time with each of us to go over a budget? Or do you want us to reach out to you? Do you have a preference?
Yeah, we'll give you some windows of time.
Any questions for Jordan or Seth on the, uh, on the general fiscal year twenty twenty-four tentative budget? There's no questions? I would enter, well, we're not doing anything with that?
We need to, there's a motion. We need to approve the budget. We need to approve the tentative budget and set a date and time uh for the public hearing.
What's that?
Language there in the uh, in the administrative side of things.
Oh, that's right.
I can go ahead and do that. I'll go ahead and move to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four tentative budget and set a public hearing date for Tuesday, June sixth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. in the council chambers.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Euler for this fiscal year twenty twenty-four tentative budget. If there's no other questions, a roll call vote. Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilman Carden?
Yes.
Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Passes and moves this to June sixth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. right here for the public hearing of the budget. Now, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to redevelopment agency.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle? Seconded by Councilman Carden to go into RDA. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in RDA where we are board members and chairman. And uh, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
Motion to approve consent items?
Motion made by Chairman, or excuse me, Board Member Argyle?
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Marshall to approve the consent items. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
This is to item B, new business, is to opt, adopt the RDA fiscal year twenty twenty-four tentative budget and set a time for the public hearing.
So, we will do this for each of the uh second, secondary entities that you uh and we belong to or we are, if you will, the redevelopment agency. And then, we'll also go to the LDA, the Local Building Authority. The RDA exists to provide uh funding and, and sources to, to address issues in underdeveloped or distressed properties. There are multiple RDAs in the area, uh, in the city. Many have closed, have lived their life and, and have done great things. We have just a couple of functioning uh RDAs, if you will.
What's that, a warehouse we need to replace back there?
I'm not sure what that is. It's a distressed building, that's for sure. It looks like what, what I'll be hiking to in, in the Boujane area in a month. It's about like that. It's about like that. So there are, there are four active RDAs that we're going to be working on this year, the North Industrial, and, and that actually is not receiving funds anymore. That's, uh, along our Main Street, some of our industrial areas. There are some funds left in that from the RDA in that area. We have preserved those funds to do work on Main Street in front of the airport and around the airport. And so this budget anticipates that we will use those, some of those funds, uh, in the tentative, but, or, uh, in next year's fiscal year, uh, with some of the work that we were discussing with the airport plan earlier today. If we don't spend them, those funds just fall back into that same RDA fund and so if we don't, uh, we, we don't lose those if we don't use those. We also have the Sierra Bonita RDA that encompasses a business on, on, uh, North Main as well. That is a, a pass-through, uh, agreement that we made with Young Living. And as they meet certain requirements, uh, they receive certain amounts of their increased property tax based on contractual arrangements. And this budget, uh, will fund those contractual arrangements. The Corona R, RDA has been in existence now for about six years and there are funds now, uh, proposed in this budget as part of the, uh, agreement for Target, uh, as they open up this year. And, uh, property tax and sales tax flow into, uh, increase because of them being here. Uh, that's a part of that contract. And then finally, the, uh, the housing, every, uh, RDA dollar that is generated has a component of it that must go to, uh, to housing.
I thought we had some money in there.
Absolutely. Yeah, this just shows you what is, uh, coming in and, and or going to be spent. Sorry, I didn't, I just said housing. I meant admin. There aren't any of the dollars that we're planning to spend in housing. There will be money that will come in.
There's money there, but we're not going to.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I meant to say admin. Uh, there are some admin costs that we will spend, uh, in this next year's, right, I misspoke. There, housing will receive money, but it will just fall into the, the fund balance of that particular RDA. Nothing too glitzy or glamorous here. I'm happy to talk about anything in the RDA or about the RDA budgets as, as proposed. If you have any questions.
You have a word on this slide?
It's equal to the expense side. We're, we're just being de minimis today. We spent forty minutes on the other stuff. This, maybe just to highlight though, there is no new revenue into this North Industrial.
So how do you come up with more money?
It's fun, it's in the funds balance. Right? So, so that RDA was receiving funds over a twenty-five year period, and when that twenty-five year period ended, we had, uh, one point eight three left. We will, although it's budgeted to spend six hundred and forty-five in this fiscal year, that was in anticipation of us doing work on North Main, which has not yet materialized. So that will fall into the fund and then we'll pull it back out. And we do anticipate spending that money more, and so we've got, we're, I think we pulled the whole, just the whole amount in.
Lots of words that a table would have been super easy to follow.
That's right there. I thought it was. Was it not? Again, making it more complicated. Brian will fix it by tomorrow with the user in our explanations.
Okay.
I think that's funny, you said that a table would have solved.
It is a.
Any other questions for Seth?
You don't have the other piece of the table.
The balance forward, you don't have much is in there, right?
I got you.
It's laugh. Only I have my engineering degree.
I know.
Or your CPA, either one.
If there's no questions, uh, for this, I would entertain a motion to adopt the RDA fiscal year twenty twenty-four tentative budget and set the time and place.
I move to approve the RDA fiscal year twenty twenty-four tentative budget and set public hearing date for Tuesday, June sixth, twenty twenty-three, six P M. in the council chambers.
Second.
Motion made by Board Member Euler, seconded by Board Member Argyle. So roll call vote. Board Member Beck?
Yes.
Board Member Euler?
Yes.
Board Member Carden?
Yes.
Board Member Marshall?
Yes.
Board Member Argyle?
Yes.
That's approved. I would entertain a motion to move into LBA.
So moved.
Motion made by Board Member Argyle? Seconded by Board Member Carden to go into LBA, local building authority. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in local building authority. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Board Member Beck, seconded by Board Member Euler to approve the consent items. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Consent items approved, takes us to B, new business on the, uh, of adopting the LBA fiscal year twenty twenty-four tentative budget with the local building authority.
Most of you look like you're still awake. That's good.
I don't feel awake.
Shane's gonna love this table. Look at that. Expenses and revenue.
Yeah, I love it.
All right. The local building authority, um, this fund accounts for city buildings that are built, um, with the building serving as the collateral on the loan. So both the construction and the debt payments show up in this fund. So here you see the construction of Library Hall. Here you see the construction of the new SFCN building. And then here you see, uh, debt payments on, uh, those two bonds. Yeah. All right. Revenue, revenue to pay for these things, well, revenue to pay the debt comes from, uh, the city. So the city's making a lease payment, uh, for the use of this building to the LBA, and then we're taking that lease payment and making the debt payment. And then you have the bond proceeds that are used to, uh, construct the building. So this is the debt issue to construct Library Hall. This is the debt issue to construct the new SFCN building. We were just putting all of the interest earnings into this one generic, uh, interest earnings line, and then we decided to break them out so you could see how much was, uh, for each of those different bonds. So when we issue debt, as we use it up, um, until we use that cash up, that cash is sitting there still earning interest, so that's what that interest is. It's the interest on cash reserved for construction that hasn't been spent yet. So the only project that we have going on here is the new SFCN building. Debt was issued a year ago. One of the cool things about this is that user fees will pay off all of the debt. No tax money will be used to pay that. Located at six fifty-seven West Center, Kitty Corner to where the new special high school is being built. Construction will, can, it started, it'll continue in the next year. And, uh, Brian Perry said the estimated completion is spring of twenty-four. Any questions about the LBA budget?
Will we, will the rec center go in the LBA? Or we do the same thing?
If we issued the rec center debt as, uh, LBA debt, the, the rate on it would be, what was it, twenty-five basis points to fifty basis points? So a quarter to fifty?
More?
Or half a percent higher.
Okay.
So we're leaning towards, uh, issuing the debt with the sales tax as the, the backstop, as the collateral there. Um, the reason for that is the rec center's viewed as a luxury item, not as a utility. So the market doesn't view it as favorable, you won't, uh, give you as low of a rate on it. And our sales tax, uh, so you can only pledge or issue so much debt on your sales tax when we, we've, uh, got plenty of headroom there.
Thank you, Jordan.
Yep.
Any other questions for Jordan on the LBA fiscal year tentative budget for twenty twenty-four? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the LBA fiscal year twenty twenty-four tentative budget and set a public hearing date for Tuesday, June sixth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. in council chambers.
Second.
Motion made by Board Member Carden, seconded by Board Member Marshall to adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget for LBA. It's a roll call vote. Board Member Argyle?
Yes.
Board Member Marshall?
Yes.
Board Member Carden?
Yes.
Board Member Euler?
Yes.
And Board Member Beck?
Yes.
That is approved. I would entertain a motion to return to council meeting.
Motion approved? So moved.
Motion made by Board Member Argyle? Seconded by Board Member Carden to go back into council meeting. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Back into council meeting.
One question. Inland Port Authority, will we recreate, will we create something new and different there or will it be an RDA?
No, it won't be anything for us. It's theirs.
They do that. Oh, okay.
Yeah. And then we'll, we, we would expend the funds however we would wa, want to. It might be inside of an enterprise fund, might be inside a general fund, or it might be the developer that spends the money, and then we would be the entity that would request reimbursement from what they would call a port area or a project area.
Their project, Port Authority project.
Yeah. Yeah. We had to wrap our heads around that, too. It's, it would not be inside of the RDA.
Okay.
Good question, though.
Do we have closed session still?
No closed session tonight. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Marshall to adjourn city council meeting, the first one in the new chambers. It's a roll call vote. Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilman Carden?
Yeah.
We're adjourned. Thank you for joining us.
Are you tired, Jesse?